Waiting to order the chair notes, there is a forum present. Here are they flag right behind you guys, we're gonna do the flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's go into 2.0, which is additions and revisions to the agenda. Pat, what do you have?
We need to have, we need to have a quick discussion and I have Delaney's blessing to add this to the agenda. Around CDO policies for the county, so the courts included, and helps decide how we want that to look.
6.4, okay, CDO policy, okay, got it. Anything else?
Nope.
Leah, you're entitled to add stuff too.
No, it's alright.
And then before you guys just referenced, Chris emailed me that list for 4.6, and that's in your guys' emails. So we'll keep it on if you guys are, okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, 3.0 is correspondence and public comment. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked to raise your hand to be recognized by the chair, give your name and address, and limit comments to three minutes. For folks who have dialed in, it is star six to unmute your phone, it's the lower left-hand side of your computer screen if you came on via Zoom. And then I always like to remind folks that we are in a formal bunch here, so as we move through the agenda, there are items you wanna comment on, provide input, ask questions, the courts in general, welcome stuff. So, any public comments? There we go, ahead.
Larry Johnson, 870 West Fourth, and the principal superintendent of the school here. As you can tell, I've been in this business a long time, and I've never run into an entity that is more supportive of schools' goals and than the commissioners and the county. Again, I've been in this 38 years, and you have been so supportive. I just wanted to say thank you for your support and continue to support for what I think is one of the most important things we have in this county, and that's our schools. And I've talked length about the importance of having good teachers here and where we're at in our staffing and people looking at retirement, and the investment in the teacher of our district with this brand. I just, I'm here to just say, thank you so much for your support. And we're already working forward and talking to different entities about the best way to use this money to get the most bang for the buck. It's been an exciting process. We did find out the other day out this year, that's because I think it's kinda interesting. We went up with, and looked at the property that one of the lots of, and there is, there is a power line that goes right through the middle of it, but we can't seem to find an easement, so we're working on it. Always something new and exciting. Anyway, the message I wanna give you is thank you for your support and your vision for where we wanna be in the future. You know, with housing, it's so important and critical for our entity, the education. When you have no place for people to be, where do you go? So, we're excited about it, and I just, again, I wanted to thank you all for your support and the ease of working with an entity that supports our vision of good schools.
So, I have a question about your district. So, I heard a rumor that the upper baseball field that's not been used forever and ever is not available for housing or anything else because you're going to make it a baseball field again, or what?
Uh, no, we're gonna, I like the term multi-purpose lot. So, that's one of the lots we're looking at putting maybe a couple of places up there. And it may make the parking lot a little smaller, but we'll still have a parking lot available. And we're, we've repurposed some of the money from one of our grants to bring that field back to look like a baseball field again. And so, there will be parking available, but...
What's the purpose of having another field up there with, when you have the field at the high school?
Well, it's interesting. Over the first two weeks I was here, I had a neighbor, and they told me very succinctly why we have a field that looks halfway decent. We hope that at some point in time we can get that field back and have the Little League and have another field to use, and have another space for PE activities, and the neighbors don't wanna look, you know, we, we did that.
I think the only thing it's been used for is for Lifeline to land up there.
Really? Well, now, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm the new guy here, they used to have a pretty robust baseball.
Before my time.
Was it? But they used to have a pretty robust baseball, and that field, just, I, just with a small amount of an investment, it'll, it'll look better. We'll have another field for kids to use, and the neighbors will be happy because they can see grass. That's not the big reason, but anyway, is that, well, it's two acres up there, so it's quite a spot. And this, so, you know, the cemetery built a beautiful parking lot, but they built it like a frying pan and had a drain that goes down right through, and so we're working with them on trying to find a better way to disperse some of the groundwater. Not that that's... Anyway, so that's, that's what I wanted to say today. And Delaney, you've been great, thank you.
We have fabulous stuff. Yeah, but, yes, it is, I can just say that like, we have this year two new superintendents, one here, one in Condon, and I think it's been very fun and inspiring to see new superintendents kind of with new ideas and be willing to look at old problems anyways. So, we're happy you're here and pushing us to look at housing. Oh, we're planning on it!
Anyway, so I'm gonna go back to my little job, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, your big job, your big job, yeah. Hold on one second. Reinvigorating is the word, I think, of what's happening with the schools. It's exciting.
It's so exciting.
Any other public comments at this point? Go ahead.
Hey, I'm Brian Walsh from Avenged Renewables. I just wanted to mention that there is a, since housing is a big topic and was just listening to the work session, there is proposed language to change, add for temporary construction housing for solar projects. ECU lanes, that is gonna be a proposal that goes through the, hopefully through some of the county commissioners, and just wanted to make you aware. It's an existing rule and it's under the wind guidelines to offer temporary construction housing, but it's not in the rule for solar. So it's a kind of a cut and paste, just to add it into the solar, so, and then, you know, it would be, I think, through the conditional use process or whatever, to allow it to go through there, but it doesn't exist for solar, but it is for wind. So, something to consider if that comes your way for considering for your, the county's support.
Any other comments at this point? If not, under correspondence, there is a special projects grant, program final report in here from the Gilmont Historical Society. There is also Paul Conway's Quarterly Veterans Report. These are too lengthy for me to read, so if folks are interested in seeing one where your county dollars go in terms of investment in our community organizations. Each one is required to report back to us, and those are always included with the county court's packets. So if you wanna see how any of these entities spent public dollars, that's our effort to provide transparency on that. On the veteran services staff, if you know of a veteran in this community, please make sure that they have Paul's number. He is invaluable in connecting veterans and their families with resources that our veterans are entitled to. And they also do some really cool things like sponsoring meals and things throughout the community throughout the year. So he is wonderful. We share him with Sherman and Wheeler County, but he is always here for our veterans. He's in the courthouse on Thursdays, but always reachable on his cell phone. So if you know of somebody who may need his services, please connect them, because he is a fabulous resource. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Commissioners, Delaney, Chris Fitz got the list for us at literally the 11th hour for the ambulance service plan. And so, as long as you guys are comfortable, I'd like to go ahead and leave that on there so that work can get started meeting. Do you guys have any questions or anything?
I'm good with that.
Consent agenda, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda then?
Go ahead, Leah.
I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of December 21st, 2022 regular meeting minutes, consider approval of January 4th, 2023 regular meeting minutes, consider appointment of Commissioner Watkins' alternate for CREA committee, consider approval of grants, the middle request for ODOT STIF biennial funding grant, consider approval of grants, the middle request for ODOT 5310 biennial funding grant, consider appointment of members for Gillum County Ambulance Service Plan Committee. I'm gonna go ahead and read those members, since that was not part of the packet. We will update the packet if you wanna go back and see. But the list, for folks who are curious, the county court rep would be Leah Watkins, North Gillum Health, Grant Wilkins, South Gillum Health, Cindy Hinton, Arlington Ambulance, David Anderson, Condon Ambulance, Shannon Copick, Frontier Dispatch, Laura Smith, Sheriff's Office, Carrie Betancourt, and then Chris Fitz would be staffing as the emergency management coordinator. Is there further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Let's move into unfinished business, 5.1, discussion and possible action regarding community investments relating, related to Oregon Trail solar project. And, okay, so, let me just do a quick summary for those who have not been following along at home. And, so, under Oregon law, counties are allowed to enter into agreements with solar developers for what is called a payment in lieu of taxes or pilots. Where basically, the developer receives tax abatement. In exchange, the county basically sets, has a, set by state law, a per-megawatt amount that is written into the agreement. So, that varies from 5,500 up to 7,000. Back on December 21st, Brian and Matt joined us via Zoom on behalf of Avenged Renewables for their Oregon Trail solar project to ask the county court to consider a pilot agreement. Specifically asking for us to approve the 5,500 amount, the project is 41 megawatts. And then, also proposing that they contribute $500 per megawatt annually, or the equivalent split between two community organizations of the county court's choosing. During our last meeting, January 4th, this court discussed that, indicated that it was open to approving the pilot at the requested 5,500 megawatt rate, wanted to see the community investments raised to 750 per megawatt per entity, so 1,500 combined. That request was conveyed back to Avenged on January 5th. They're here to talk to us about that today, just to give you a status update on where the pilot itself is and the road use agreement. So, Avenged provided us with a draft pilot agreement that went to our Energy Council, Laura Westmeyer, who reviewed it, sent comments back to us. We then sent those to Avenged. Their legal counsel reviewed it, came back with some, some things that she had changed that they did not wanna change, et cetera. So that is back with Laura, and so she is doing another review to determine if those are acceptable, if we need to ask for additional changes. So, but pilot itself is not ready and would not be ready today regardless of what the court decides, because it is still undergoing legal review. And then the road use agreement is similar. There was some indemnification language that our attorneys are looking at. And so, depending on if that's acceptable, that may be a simpler one, or we may have some language coming back to Avenged. So, both are under, currently under review. Also wanted to put a marker in place, this is complicated for folks who are not in energy, that literally as we speak, Avenged has an application into FSEC, which is the Energy Facility Siting Council, which for those who are unaware, Gillum County does not do the citing of these large energy projects that happens at state level. So this is the entity that decides if, where, and then they can build and all the conditions related to that. And so they are currently considering an amendment that would extend the construction deadline. They will be holding a hearing for people who are interested in Condon tomorrow evening. So if folks who are adjacent to that, or even just wanna weigh in on a new solar project coming in, that's an opportunity to provide comment. And so part of today's discussion is twofold. One is to continue discussions regarding the size and timing of the community donations. And then two is to determine if the county court would like to submit comments to the FSEC process. Just as a reminder, we previously sent comments in regarding community benefit impact to act for their whole three exception. They submitted response comments, and so we do have a history sort of, we're on the record already on some of this. But there may be an opportunity, particularly on the, on the size and scope of the community donations, to provide additional comment to FSEC regarding those provisions. So, that is in summary where we are on this topic. Did I miss anything, Avenged?
You covered it really well.
Commissioners, where would you like to begin?
Where, where are you at? I guess I'm confused at where you're at.
Alright, yeah.
Where, where have you landed on your donation to start with?
Yeah, so, right, right now, we landed on our commitment that we've been writing that we're committed to the $500 per megawatt contribution level to both of them. We have our internal approvals to do that and make the donation at that level. And we plan to inform ODOT, or they have been informed right now of that level of donation, and under the same plan, that we would then pay for part of that, half of it upfront, and then the other half when the project, you know, moves forward. And so, with the both, mellowes of understanding with both the Southern Conservation District and also the Department of Arlington, we're about tens down. I was trying to get a hold of Judd this morning to make sure that we are tens down, but I think, you know, aside from the, you know, both organizations were totally off on the amount that we put in there, you know, pending the discussion today or any future discussions on this topic, that we're pretty much tens down on those memo and understanding. So, and so we're prepared to execute on what we stated in our letter at the $500 per megawatt. At the, yeah, 75,000 per each organization, you know, upfront, and then the rest, you know, when we know the project's moving forward, which is, we don't know if the project's moving forward at this point. We don't have a customer for the project right now, and that's part of that, why we're here, to finalize the pilot agreement, because it's one piece of the moving economics on where we're gonna land with the project. But, you know, we're really pleased, you know, we heard what the county said, the feedback on like what would be meaningful for, you know, local benefit for the county, and making sure that like housing is a shortage here, and we know that from our Montec Solar projects and Montec Wind project, that, and trying to keep those dollars, you know, locally in the county, and we're hoping that our contributions, just for Arlington, helps, you know, a little bit incrementally, take steps forward to adding housing. And then also the Southern Water Conservation Districts and protecting farmland and ag land, because we do recognize we'd be taking some of the farmland out, you know, with the solar project. And even though we are looking at grazing within the solar projects too as well, to keep some ag use within the solar fence and just growing that, but in cheaper kind of the chosen variety of barnyard or livestock that can not, you know, not destroy, but there's some things we have to test out with some of the above ground these cableings. But anyways, we're pursuing that as far as ag use within the solar farm. That's where we are right now with that MOV.
Well, I wanna ask you a few questions, because I don't know the numbers and I've got some ideas, but who is the biggest counties in Oregon producing renewable energy or will be when that solar project is done? I believe the chairman of Gillum.
This Montec Solar project will be the largest operating solar.
But I'm talking about total renewable megawatt. I figured you would know that, Brian.
Yeah, I mean, Sherman and Gillum County would be the two largest, I think, Sherman might...
I thought maybe Sherman might have.
Sherman's got 10 megawatts of wind, 10 megawatts of solar. And then how much is Shepherd's Flat in Cameron?
I can't remember, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna get that, so I know those numbers.
The largest share?
Yeah, I don't.
The larger portion in Gillum County for Shepherd's Flat? Then I, and knowing the sort of five of 850 megawatts, I would get a larger share of that. I'd say between Wheatland with the two, you know, Pebble Springs, things you ever A.D. Montag, that you would have more than 1,200 megawatts in a wind game count.
I thought maybe the new project, Montec Two, might put us ahead of Sherman County, but I wasn't sure where.
Oh, I think you're already there with Wheat.
We're number one.
So that in mind, how many houses, and I know there's different turbines that produce different amounts, but can you tell me how many houses can be powered by a turbine?
It varies on that metric, so, and it's on more of a per-megawatt, so, and like, and turbines are different sizes.
But say the, say the, it doesn't matter, just, I'm curious. I've heard of, the reason I'm asking is I went on a tour up here a couple of years ago, and they told me 20,000 houses could be powered by one turbine.
By one turbine? I think that's, that's high.
Like, how high? Can you give me an idea?
Yeah, I can look, I can look it up here shortly and then, and give you a firm number. I mean, every state puts out like the average home consumption, and, and then they back into like how much they would have the power. So it varies from state to state in what electrical, like, for use, but yeah, we can look that up real quickly on what it is.
Well, and the reason, the reason I'm asking, Brian, is that, you know, I'm, I'm in support of the whole 1500 for community donations for a couple of reasons, and I did just a little rough math around our residents in Gillum County and, and if I just take, we got 1,900 residents, and if we have 600 houses and they average 150 a month, it's over a million dollars that our residents pay for power costs every year. And it's kinda like, we had all, we're generating all this power, why in the hell is that happening? And it just, to me, doesn't make sense, and I have a conversation with a lot of people, just doesn't make sense. So how do you make up for that? And I, and then we sit and dicker over tax abatements and all this stuff in the process, and now we're down to what I think is a really minimal difference between what we're asking here for and what you're offering. And it offsets that obviously, you know, when we have residents to get up every morning and look out the window and they see a turbine turn in, or you drive from Arlington to Condon, and now you see a project that's got solar panels for as far as you can see for a while, there's negativity that comes with that. And so, you know, we deal with those residents, constituents here that have those issues. And, you know, I think there's probably an overlying understanding that renewable is probably good for Gillum County in the long run by most residents, but nobody really knows what that means in dollars and cents or anything else. And so, that, that's kinda where I'm coming from. I don't think it's that big an ask for what we're asking, and, and I've talked to you about, this is the last project we're probably gonna get for a while, just based on transmission?
Yeah, I mean, it's interconnection, transmission, like, there are limitations. I mean, I, I think, you know, your next opportunities are a little bit, we talked about are probably repowering of projects, just like Shepherd's Flat, like, you know, that was a bit of a lemon for the CE. At Shepherd's Flat, and that's why, you know, it's only been operating for 10 years, and there's the repowering already. But there's older turbines out, out, you know, even at our projects that we're evaluating for, for repower, and so I think there's other opportunities to replace 80% of the value, refresh the tax base, but as far as low, yeah, low-cost interconnection, right, the last remaining 41 megawatts of, at Slatt Substation, that's my knowledge, is, is the last low-cost interconnection, you know, for a while.
And you told me recently that to get BPA, substantial BPA upgrades, it's gonna have to come from the developers and the projects that come along to pay for those?
Yeah, I mean, the way it works is, you know, the developer comes in and like they fund the, the upgrades that BPA identifies in the cost analysis. And then, you can get some of those, there are a portion of them, and most of them, you know, are team network upgrades, and then there's direct assign. The network upgrade portion is something that you can get back over time with transmission credits, but it's, you know, over years and years that you can make back that money of the network upgrades. But, but yeah, I mean, building a new substation, expanding Slatt Substation, like, there's, you know, system impact studies, study results that are public out there on what their cost would be. And then, you know, it's getting to, it's the $100 billion range, and there, there are a few projects without, like, that have the size to bear those economics and those costs. And so, you'd have to then find a customer that's willing to bite off a 300, 400 megawatt project or 500 megawatt project at one time. And that really typically hasn't happened in Oregon, Washington. I mean, Shepherd's Flat, I'd say was an anomaly where you had one customer, Southern California, has been, been off 825 megawatts at a time, and then has some buyer remorse afterwards, but I'd say that is an exception to, and not the rule.
Do you think the exception's changing with the times, Warren?
I, I think so. I mean, kinda yet to see who bites off what. I mean, there are a lot of developers that are banking on it, so you're seeing interconnection requests of the 600, 800, 1,000, 1,200 megawatt interconnection requests for projects, and they're probably phased projects. But, you know, with a, an entire west coast that is, has gone, you know, non-carbon, and, you know, there's a lot of demand that'll be coming in the next, even in the next eight years to hit the 30, you know, 20, 30 goals.
Unrealistic demand.
Yeah, right. Well, yeah, you have a transmission grid, and that isn't ready to support that, so, there's some fundamental.
Think about EV charging and electric cars and no, no gas-fired cars in Oregon, and it takes five minutes to gas a car up, and now it's gonna take, what, 45 minutes to fast charge one? What happens to just production across the country when you do that to people? It's just unbelievable. So, the other thing, and I'm just gonna, I went to Condon yesterday, the Southern Water Conservation Meeting, and we, we argue back and forth about community contribution during the construction project, and that parking lot is completely full of employees. And you made a statement to me the other day, I wanna just kinda clarify from my side, that when they did the repower up here, because we got substantial community spend off of the repower. And, and from, from what I could see in the businesses around it, I'm talking, and I'm really talking about the small businesses. I know you can, you have some specifics that you spent money on that were in the county but really didn't have a big effect on a lot of the county. And, you know, a little close to where I was at, because at that time I got a couple restaurants, I don't anymore, so I'm not in that. And, but the concern is still there for me, because I care about our businesses and the community that we're in. We got two restaurants that are shut down recently following the great huge projects that are going on. Parking lot full of community, of employees out here yesterday, that we don't see anything out of. I don't care how you look at it, we just don't, we had a, you know, just minimal business at any place in town yesterday, it was pretty dismal.
Depending on for Montec Solar.
Yeah, and, and the difference in, for us, is we had equivalent employees on the repower up here for Shepherd Flat that we did on the solar project, and most of the community spend came from up here. And that's, you know, that's part of where I come from, when I'm having those conversations with you, is the employees that working on those projects are not, on this project in particular, don't spend the money that Res did when they did Montec One, and not spending the money that Mortensen did on the Shepherd Tree Flat.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you, Commissioner Shannon, and I, I understand and acknowledge, like, it might not be as apparent, and, but like, we're not, we're apples and oranges between Shepherd's Flat and the 850 megawatt project with, with a lot more capital to spend and a lot more margin that they had in it because of what they were doing and just the incentive. So, there was a lot more money with Shepherd's Flat than there was with, you know, we're talking 850 megawatts versus 162, probably with a higher way to return to on that project. So there was, there was a lot of money, and there are two different, you know, contractors too as well.
I think it's more on the contractors, it is on the spend, because it's more for us, and for what I'm talking about, it's about the number of employees that are spending their... You know, their daily spend on how they're surviving while they're out on a contraction job.
Yeah.
And, and then between the two of them, if you've got the same amount of employees, you know, it's where they're, they're both can spend the same amount of money. So that's the part I'm talking about.
Yeah.
There were some things that I can agree with you with, where Morton said did some things that didn't happen on Montague two. For their employees, but that's not what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
They were single events, large, single events where, you know.
Right, and then you said that they ran it off the golf course and they did a couple of other things. And yeah, some of that, we can't control what our contractors do or do or don't do.
Definitely put some pressure on.
And definitely we do, we incentivize and, and definitely the message back to, you know, our, our E P C contracting folks. About tracking local spend down to the zip code too as well, so they were better able to report back. And that will be something that will, will happen with Oregon Trail if the project, you know, does move forward, that we've asked to track, you know, spend within the county in which we're building. And to prove that out, but, you know, I invited the, the union folks to here today, just to talk about like where their employees are. Because it was, wasn't clear to me like where our entire workforce was coming from that are building the project, but. And, and how they spend money. So I, you know, I asked them to come yesterday. And so I'm very grateful that they showed up, but I, I do want to give them the opportunity to talk about, you know, local spend. What they experienced, where they house, just to, to have that feedback. I don't know what that's going to be, but I do want to, to give you that, that, that feedback. We also have Colton Wilson who, you know, runs our, our Montague Solar Project two, and he can provide some perspective on, on local spend. And I know from your particular optic, optics of owning two restaurants and seeing the differences, like, you know, it's, it's a slight bias. But we try to provide some of that information about where we spent, based on like, you know, power or electric, who did the high voltage side at Montague Solar and where they spent money. Didn't get as much out of Sterling Wilson on the other side of the project and weren't as helpful as being transparent on where they spent money exactly in the county. But that's why we asked some, you know, some of the laborers and people to, to come talk about where they, where they spend money. But the bottom line, it gets down to it, is Oregon Trail does not have scale worth forty one megawatts. It is the leftovers of, of interconnection slat after Montague Wind and Montague Solar. It doesn't have economies of scale and I talked about this a lot. And so it stands to like a million dollars makes a difference for Oregon Trail. And not that this, like the, the tax agreement, you know, makes, makes or breaks the pro, project, but. You know, with inflation, with rising materials, like supply chain issues, everything like that, everything has gone up over the last year. And our goal is to keep, as, as much as I'd like to, like, say that the community benefits and everything, where you set a project comes, it's the decision when somebody. Who's making that decision to buy the power from a project matters, it does, but it, it's price driven. And with solar, it's really a race to the bottom, you know, because there aren't as many barriers to where you can build a solar project. So we're lucky enough that Oregon Trail gets to piggyback off, off of Montague Solar, Montague Wind and the infrastructure and the transmission line that it already built. Or the substation and the grading that's already there. I think the only reason why we're able to even get into the, near on the high end of the market. Where we think it is right now is because of those shared facilities and it's a low cost, but you know, if I had the project tried to stand on its own. Where it's located, it just wouldn't happen. And so, yeah, I agree, it's not a huge amount of money. And, and you're absolutely right, but.
And you're getting pretty good tax abatement anyway.
Yeah, absolutely. So.
And, and you are, you're getting, even at the seven thousand, fifty five hundred plus fifteen, you're still getting a substantial tax pay.
Oh, it, it definitely helps, like even at seven, seven thousand, it, it, every little bit helps. And that's why, you know, I've been persistent about. And, and, and I'm sorry, I'm so persistent, but like I, I know. Yeah, it's my job to be persistent. I want to see the project go and it's, it's just so close. And when I told you about it, like. A lot of things have changed in the last year and prices have gone up and we bid this project in to just, you know, a couple of different R F Ps last year. That are just now getting down to the final selection part and it's, it's an opportunity that we have right now. So I. I know that you need to take it the best deal for the county and that's what your job is. And my job is to try and make that, you know, make the project happen. And so that's, that's where I am. I know where you are and your position. I appreciate it. Like if I, we had a bigger project, I wouldn't be fighting so hard. But, uh, you know, it's just like we did in Marl County that we asked for it and, and got the sixty two fifty on a hundred and twenty megawatt project. Which really helped that project go over the finish line and we're in the same situation where we are today. And it's a third of the size of, of the Tower Road project in Marl County. But I, I, I hear you.
So, so I personally just find it hard to believe that, you know, Avengrid would not have penciled it out both ways. And I mean, you're a billion dollar company and you wouldn't have thought, you know, this is how much it's gonna cost us at six thousand megawatts. And this is how much it's gonna cost us at seven thousand. And I am going to push for the fifteen hundred, so.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Because it's in the best interest of the county residents. And that is gonna tremendously help at least the housing part, which we just got done with a whole hour work session on that. Yeah, so.
I mean, my point of view to sort of piggyback off of is we, there is a reason we are number one here. Our court has historically given tens of millions of dollars away in tax abatements. To your company, to other companies. And we are asking for less than one of, one back. In order to support the things that we need to do to support the people who live here. And so when I read, I mean, I, I was curious because I think it's helpful. Every time you and I talk, it seems like you are. Going under Avengrid's mattresses to find the money to be able to put these projects together. And so I just, for the public's sake. So they understand who we're talking with is that Avengrid. Which is your main company that you're representing, first three quarters of twenty twenty two, you cleared seven hundred and forty nine million dollars. A lot of which you're making off of our willingness to be good partners, good hosts here. Ivedrola, who's your parent company, cleared five billion with a V last year. So I don't understand why we are using our resources right now to talk about what amounts to sixty thousand dollars a year.
Uh, yeah, it's real simple. I mean, I can explain it to you, like every project has assets. And they, they cost something to put them in the ground. And there's the cost of your capital, the money, like if you were to borrow money and your capital. And like, then you're, there's your return on investment above that. If we don't make that hurdle, like our company will not approve the project for construction. So we take our costs of capital rate and the P P A price. And it either gives us the return on investment that's worth Avengrid's money, like to spend it, or they could go spend it other where, in other ways. And at other places in the world, globally, like where they can put their capital in. So it's, it's about making a, a rate of return that, that's more than your cost of money.
Well, I get that, Brian, but I also sat here two years ago when you made the same step, same argument about Montague. Even though you already had a power purchase agreement in place, you did, because Avengrid and the purchaser had already put out press releases. Saying that the largest solar farm was gonna be located right here. And you convinced this court, obviously I was the one holdout, as you know, to give away what ten plus million dollars. In tax abatements to make this project work for you. And my question is, at what point do the people who live in this county, who support your projects, actually get to see benefit from that?
They, they absolutely do. I mean, I think, you know, I think it's fair to represent to the, the county, like the differences of the tax revenue. Even if there is a tax abatement program and the difference from zero and getting tax revenue. So like if the project doesn't get built, then there is zero. So we like to, you, you're comparing between like a seven thousand and fifty five hundred. I'm like, when really it's a top, it's a question of whether it's zero or it's fifty five hundred or a thousand per megawatt.
Except that I don't think that's the case. I don't think you're walking.
That's a piece of farmland that can still be productive and.
But what's your rate of return on, on, on an acre of, of, of wheat?
You're talking to a girl that was a farm girl who owns a grain trucking company. So when I drive by the Montague Solar site, it breaks my heart. And now we're looking at garbage clear across the road from when they had the windstorm. And there's cardboard all over the side of the road over there.
I'd say.
So it breaks my heart. So you can, you can talk till you're blue in the face. It's not gonna work on me.
The, the difference is like. I think if I did that right. Ninety dollars, uh, I believe it's ninety dollars an acre return and four hundred and fifty to the landowner personally is root is lease. So it's substantial revenue for the landowner for having solar out there.
That's, that would be a gross calculation, not a net, right? You're fifty percent of that is in expenses, like just roughly. Yeah, so your, your take home is forty five.
And I did, I mean, the, the night is about a hundred and eighty on thirty bushels of weed at six bucks a bushel. Thirty bushel.
We're talking about Shiller flat.
Thirty, I, I understand that it's higher producing dry land ground and all that stuff, but I'm using some numbers that we can all relate to. Then you gotta divide by two, because you gotta have it in summer fall over a year.
But the, I think the larger point is that I am, I am so tired. Of hearing that if we don't give you everything you want, you're gonna go over to the next county. This is what we heard under Montague. And. I don't believe you. I don't believe that you guys have invested as much as you have in the X F project and all of those things. And by the way, part of the reason that S excited you was because you're sitting right next to, to Montague. I mean, that was why you bought part, partially, you got four reasons for the goal three exception. Close proximity to infrastructure was one of them. So I, I don't, I don't buy that a company that is making as much as you have will make or break a deal over sixty thousand dollars a year. I don't buy. You guys have probably spent as much time lobbying us. As it, as you are actually gonna get in what you're asking us to do. And so you nickel and dime us on our end, why don't you go back to the, the buyers who are buying? I mean, they're, they have no problem in charging their customers more.
We understand we're getting a fourteen and a half percent. Power increase through Pacific Power. On this end of the county. Pretty soon.
So my point is, why is it always our citizens that need to take a haircut when you're short on your budget? Why isn't it ratepayers in Portland who, customers are paying more money for their, their things? So who's making money in this? It's not us. It's not the people who are paying their power bills. So it's either you or it's whoever is buying it from you. And it's not that we don't want to support businesses here. I think our history shows that we have, but it is very aggravating to me that we are spending time. Talking about what amounts to sixty thousand dollars a year. With a multi-billion dollar company.
I totally understand your, your expectations and, and, and they're reasonable. I, 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 I get. I, uh, it's, again, it's back to if like, if you wanted to invest a hundred dollars and you could get, you take your hundred dollars and you get a hundred and ten. Putting it in one place or a hundred and five somewhere else, that, that is the difference. And it is a death by a thousand cuts. Like in, you know, Oregon Trail, we've had it out there for a long time, right? And we've been marketing it. It's just a small project and it, it just doesn't happen. And we come, come up with the inflation and everything, you ask the union guys, but they've seen them like, like Costco up or Colton or somebody else, like what's happened in the last year? And there's upwards, like with the Montague Solar Project was, is a prime example, like we are not making the return that we expected, right? When we built it, because it was based on economics that were a lot longer ago. So our company is taking like a lot less revenue that's coming in that we expected on Montague Solar. And that's true of tapping the Oregon Trail. Ultimately, you're in, you know, have the ability to approve whatever you want. My job is to explain to you like what this particular project is. And just like we talked about, when we were gonna bring Oregon Trail tech together with Montague Solar for a tax. Like it's a smaller project, there was support for it at fifty five hundred back then, and then we, we tabled it and just focused on Montague. So we're, I'm like, it's still the same thing. But I hear your point. I want to validate. I understand the county's concerns. But in the end, every project has to stand on its own and its own economics, regardless of what. My Avengrid or Eva Joel may, right? And Avengrid, like ink in the numbers that you, that's right, eight regulating utilities out in New England. A networks business, a gas business, there's other things and like the different divisions within the company. But ultimately, these assets have to make money on their own, like Oregon Trail, L L C and the solar project has to have a return on investment. Otherwise, Eva Joel and their current company will take their capital and go invest it in a different project where they can make one. And, and that's bottom line economics of where, where it is. So we're fighting for like our, our best to give it the best chance of, of winning the power purchase agreement. And ultimately, it's your decision and, and we respect that. I, I understand. We, we'd like to make the contribution. We heard like on the donations, which is the agenda I, I were here, we're going to follow through with what we said, communicated that to F C. We believe in helping out housing because it's a benefit for us and our workers and, and the soil conservation district. We understand we're having an impact of our land. And, and we want to give back. We listened to what we did, what you said, the feedback, that we went out and found organizations. That address the near term concerns that you have. I will say on, on the timing piece of it, if, just like the project and the economics on, on a, on a tax basis, right? Those aren't realized until the project is actually put into the ground. And then the year after it achieves operations will be the first taxable year. So right now, we were building Oregon Trail in twenty twenty five, the first taxable year that we could take the exception would be then filed in January, like in twenty twenty six. So meaningful dollars like would, would not be coming in until that timeframe. And that's why like the donations are one vehicle to get money earlier. So you can help the housing shortage now ahead of the next project coming.
We would just like to have you double that donation.
What's that?
Actually triple.
We do not have the budget, the project, I, I told you, like everything is true. We do not have the budget to fund the donation upfront. Like it, 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 not until that we have like, know that we have a power purchase agreement and there's approval to move the project forward. Do we get other additional budget? And we did not budget anything for the donation like that were proposed, like now, let alone like three times that amount. And so those dollars like would have to for the rest of the contribution, or would it have to be pushed out into the future, like when the project, you know. Knows it's going forward. I mean, that is, that's the reality.
So you went into this still not thinking that you had any room for negotiation at all?
No, I, I.
It's like, this is it and that's it.
No, Commissioner Watkins, like to get back to your earlier point, your question, like, we ran it at fifty five hundred, we ran it at six thousand, we ran it at seven thousand. We, I know what it, the, the, we ran it without any tax abatement, like normal taxes. I know all those dollar numbers, right? And we, we put all those in the model and, and we'll, and that's why we, we came up with the, the pilot is the best advantage for, for the project. And that's what we're asking for.
I mean, we get that, but I think what maybe Commissioner Watkins is getting at is when you went to submit for folks who are looking to purchase power. To, why did you not bid it, assuming that you had none of those tax breaks in there? In which case, anything you realized from us would put your money ahead. Instead of making the assumption that we're gonna give away the farm and then come to us because you made an incorrect assumption. And did not price appropriately for the market. I mean, I still get back to, I understand that this is a long process where you are submitting our, or responding to R F Ps. And then you have to go through this whole negotiation of power purchase agreements, all of those things. I understand that that is a lengthy process. But taxes of all things are something you can predict. So to me, I mean, I'm not sure why the court, I mean, with all due respect, why we need to make up the budget shortfall if you didn't plan appropriately. And because you know what the taxes are, they're set by state law, you can predict that very easily. So I don't understand why, when you come up short, because you make assumptions that are not true. That suddenly it's upon us to make your budget work.
I, I, I don't, I don't look at it that way. And we ran it and, and we made assumptions, whether like it was the red zone, which is originally what we were talking about. Or three year or five year, we ran the sensitivities on that. And then, you know, once the legislation went through and passed and extended the pilot. On twenty twenty one, right, we were able to model the pilot agreement. And so, yeah, we ran it at seven thousand, we ran it at a three year, we ran it at a five year. Like we're aware of what the economics, we're not asking the county to, to make up for shortfall in what we did. Like we based in economics and we did on, with our best information that we had at the time. And I don't think anybody predicted where inflation or su- supply chain like issues were, were bringing us to, to where we are. And I don't think anybody predicted where inflation or su- supply chain like issues were, were bringing us to, to where we are today. Or nor can we control like the tariffs that have been put in place by the federal government on, on. We're, you know, coming from Asia where eighty percent of the solar modules come from, right? That are manufactured, right? None of these factors like backed it in at the time. We made assumptions. We were conservative and inflation outpaced. And, and the tariffs outpaced where, where the industry thought that we were going. We're not asking you to make up. Like for a budget shortfall to, to maintain our pricing, we're asking you to, to, to help the project along. But it's not, we're not, we ran it both ways.
So.
We'll base the economics on, on whatever you decide.
So you've been very specific that this project's going to stand on its own. So you have put into place some infrastructure to take on Oregon Trail that's already in place. So now if Oregon Trail doesn't go, your profit on Montag two goes down.
No.
Then what goes with it, with the extra expense to build the substation and transmission? Issues you addressed to take on Oregon Trail. What happens to that, that you wouldn't have had to if you weren't going to build it?
So we, we don't, it, Montag Solar stood on its own, right? It bore the cost.
I'm just saying you have, so is Montag two supporting all of the substation expense?
Montag Solar.
Montag Solar is supporting all of, yeah, everything in the substation and like Oregon Trail wasn't paid for anything that, that's in Montag Solar. Like it's a standalone entity. It had to, it was priced and bid based on, uh, the capital estimate to build the substation, all the facilities that are out there today.
But it was okay, all the facilities that are out there today, but it, it wasn't, you weren't considering Oregon Trail when you built it?
Um, what we knew, we had forty-one megawatts left over. So like we left space, uh, on. In, within the substation area to bring in low voltage into the transformer that's out there, but. We always knew that we needed two transformers out there and there's excess capacity and we. Sized it to, to, you know, they're, they're matching. So they're both a hundred megawatt. You know, transformers on there and that, that are out there. And so you have a hundred and sixty-two and so two hundred megawatts for the transformer. So you've got that forty-one that, that's left over. Uh, you know, on, on the transformer. So in Montag Solar for the cost, because it needed two transformers, you can't put. All the power on the one and like, because if you lose one transformer, you lose the entire project, right? So. We always split that from a risk per second. So all those costs were borne by Montag Solar. It didn't count on Oregon Trail, Oregon Trail just. It's right in the coattails that, that we had to build a two thirty line and those lines, electrical lines will support more electrons just based on. Our interconnection voltage is, is two thirty.
So I want to maybe shift the court's discussion just temporarily, uh, because there is a potential action item and I wanted to get feedback on this. We have in our discussions here. Connected the community donations with the pilot, but the nexus of them, the origination of them actually came from a different place, which is the exec. Amendment that is currently being considered, uh, at ODO. Um, so. Part of the reason that this contribution came about was because we submitted comments to FSEC. Questioning whether there was sufficient community benefit. And questioning, um, the impact to agriculture, which were two of the four things that FSEC used as reasons to provide the goal three exception under. So. One of the questions I have for the commissioners is, um, whether we would like to submit comments on the community donations piece. It sounds like there is a consensus that we would like to see those at fifteen hundred.
I would.
Yes.
So you have a draft comment letter in your packet, um, that I put together. Obviously this is not binding to anything. It's our best, uh, recommendations to FSEC of what we think constitutes a community benefit. To summarize it, basically what it asks for is fifteen hundred per entity. Per, uh, or sorry, fifteen hundred total per megawatt. Seven fifty per entity for, um, the fifteen years. But we are asking for that to be made upfront. Um, in part, I think this is important to hear, and especially because of port, you have two port commissioners sitting right behind you. Um, is that seventy-five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars chunks will not address housing. Like it doesn't even buy a door at this point, speaking to the inflation costs that you were just talking about your project. So if you're serious about us going to FSEC and saying, yes, this is a community benefit. It has to be substantial enough to actually move the needle on housing. It can't just be a, this is our good showing that doesn't actually do anything. And the same goes for the contributions to SWCD. They, if, if they are given that money in a lump sum upfront. What that allows them to do is go after federal and state dollars and use your dollars as match, which basically can double, triple, quadruple. The actual impact to communities when you do that. And same goes for the hap- for the court that's sitting behind you is the money that could be contributed there. They will go after state dollars. They will go after federal dollars and that gives them cash, but not if they have to wait fifteen years to get it. And so I think the, the way that I wrote the letter is asking for that contribution to be made. Upfront. It can be after you sell it, but before construction begins, because then you know that it's moving forward to your point. And that you have a buyer. Um, but I would expect to your point about it not being in the budget, that perhaps Avengrid being the size that it is could consider a community contribution. That comes out of its seven hundred and fifty million, um, that it had in the first three quarters. I also say this because we have a significant employer that's sitting behind you, who if I had made this request to would not add an I. About trying to contribute to what we're doing here. And they employ a hundred and fifty people here and. As far as I know, have never come to us and complained about paying taxes. So. I don't feel that this is unreasonable to ask for less than a million dollars upfront. And for your company to figure out a, a way to pay for it. And allow us then and our community partners to actually invest and do some good in housing, but ten thousand dollars a year. Is not even, I mean, I don't, and I don't know in what realm that would ever move the needle in housing, but it is not. I could not say with a straight face to the FSEC commissioners that, yes, this meets a community need. Like it is too insignificant and it's spread over too long of a period of time for that to actually do any good. And I don't feel like if FSEC were to ask us, do we feel this is sufficient? I could say with a straight face, yes. Um, it, it just isn't. Um, we, as you heard from, uh, our hearing. Um, or our, uh, work session, we're talking about developments that will cost us many millions of dollars. Um, and so we're not even in the ballpark if you guys are helping us address housing, if we are not substantially higher than where you are. And what we have proposed, I think, gives a nice, solid piece of funding. That then our community partners can go out and double, quadruple, um, the actual benefit in the community. And frankly, then it's a win for you because I would be happy then to go to FSEC anytime you're building a project. And saying that, that your company is committed to helping the communities that have supported you, um, in building these projects.
Yeah, I mean, to be fair though, like you're, you're putting like the housing issue and putting Oregon Trail on solving the housing issue or making a big chunk in that. Housing like it's, it's not the right sized project to do it, but. I mean, also let's talk about like part of the time and I have to go back, like the project does not have a budget to spend upfront dollars. Like until it, it, it's approved and then we actually know it's going to move forward. So and I'm very happy to, I understand like that's the biggest bang for the buck getting the dollars sooner. And I'm a great, is always supportive of that, but like not until we have. An approval to move forward is your budget that we can actually spend for what you're asking for. And, and on top of that was, I, Commissioner, I, the. There is also the, the timing of the pilot too as well. So what guarantee do we have today? If, I mean, you could prove the. You asked for the community donation of that, but we have no guarantee that you're going to prove the pilot at fifty-five hundred.
So what? I would say is that, I mean, this is a county board that's meeting in public and in general, we keep our promises. So, um, in fact, I can't think of a time that we have not kept a promise that we made. Um, part of the reason we meet in public is so that people can hold us accountable if we don't. Um, so I'm not sure that I appreciate the connotation, um, that we might back out, but, um. To your point about the amount of money, we are asking basically for the amount. Back that you were asking us to give away to you. So it's not unreasonable. We didn't just pick fifteen hundred out of the sky. That is the amount of tax abatement you have asked. The county and its taxing districts to give up. So it's not like we just had a pie in the sky. Here, let's, you fix our housing for us. We are basically saying that we are willing to give up the community benefit that we experience in the pilot. In exchange for you making investments elsewhere in the community. That's not an unreasonable amount that we're pulling out. We're not asking you to solve all of our problems here. We're just saying we're giving on our end. We expect you to give on yours.
And I, I will get back to like the, the legislation when it passed in, uh, in twenty twenty-one to extend the pilot and which was a fixed seven thousand dollars a megawatt and then. You know, part of the liberation and then what AOC, uh, you know, spoke about is, is having that flexibility on a tax benefit because seven thousand. Like due to different sized projects, wasn't that great of an incentive? And that's why they, they created this discretionary range agreement too. So. Essentially we're paying seven thousand, which a smaller project just needs the advantage, but I, you know, that's. You know, that, that, that's why they created that. And that's why we're asking for that because it's the exact same situation where you have a smaller project. That, that needs the, as much help as possible, like if you want, but I, I hear your comment, but I, I, you know, that fifty-five hundred, fifteen hundred is. You know, and what we're asking for is break off the seven thousand because of the project size in the first place, but. I, again, like we're, we're all.
Say that part again.
So the. The reason why the legislation part of it's justified to have a sliding scale was that it, it was seven thousand per megawatt. Under the previous pilot legislation that passed in two thousand sixteen. And because of the cost and we're solvers today and different sized projects, the county and those that lobbied for the legislation of how it to be extended. Wanted there to be a mechanism that they could adjust the size of the benefit based on project size and others. Uh, other factors that go into it. So that's why there was a range, a discretionary range created between fifty-five hundred and a thousand per megawatt. And that's why.
It was a last sentence that you actually said that bothered me, not the whole spiel.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know how we can play it now.
Okay. So I want to circle back to comments. Commissioners, have I captured your position in the comments? Um.
Yes.
I think.
You mean in the letter?
It, yes.
Yes. Yes, I remember.
Because they would need to be submitted by tomorrow at the close of the public hearing, which I, unless they keep a record open, but I'm assuming they will close it. Um, tomorrow. And so Pat, are you okay with this as well? Um, could I? So just so that we're clear, I mean, it would be ideal to not have to have. Ask F, F, FSEC to make this a condition of your permit. Like it would be ideal to not have it attached to your ability to even build this thing. I would love to be able to go to. ODO staff and say that you have been. Meeting us exactly where we want to be, but I feel like we have to submit comments, uh, because they are your regulator. To try to compel you to come to where we are, which is the fifteen hundred. Um, so. Could I commissioners get a motion on the comments, um, to get them submitted? And then I think we can continue to the discussion on the contributions.
I moved to approve the comments to the energy facility citing council. As presented and to authorize county judge to submit them.
Second.
So moved and seconded that we approved the comments to the energy facility citing council is presented and to authorize the county judge to submit them is there further discussion? All this in favor?
I.
I.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I will get those submitted. Let's continue. I mean, I, like I said, I would love for us to be able to reach an agreement. I think. What we have communicated to you is that the pilot will be adjusted according to what these contributions look like. So one way or the other, it's going to be seven thousand. It's just whether you're going to take credit for, for proactively going and investing in our community or whether we're going to have to do it kicking and screaming. In the pilot agreement. So the time, to me, the only thing up for negotiation right now is the timing.
I mean, to be, to be fair, like I think you're paying Avengrid in what our ability is, what we did, like. I, I'm feeling a very little respect if you're on, on what we did. We voluntarily went out and sought out these organizations. To try and find a meaningful contribution to, to the county, based on the feedback that we've received for you. From you, like on what would be meaningful. I mean. It's a voluntary like donation that we're asking for, like, like committing to doing. And that's what we're, we're going to follow through on.
It's voluntary right now unless FSEC makes that a condition of your permit and then it's not voluntary. And the reason that precipitated this is because you told us under Montag Solar that we would see significant community. Uh, benefit that did not, we did not realize. Here in actuality. And so. Part of the reason, let's be clear about the reason this came up. It wasn't because you came to us and suddenly decided you wanted to make a community contribution. It came up because you need FSEC to approve your amendment. And we challenged the reasons that they approved your amendment. And in order to satisfy FSEC, you have now offered to make a community contribution, which we appreciate. But let's be clear that this was not out of the goodness of your heart, that you suddenly decided to make the contribution. FSEC is asking how you were justifying the community contributions that you've used. As a reason to receive your goal three exception. And so without the community benefit, the community investment we're talking about. You are in danger of receiving that exemption. So I just want to be clear, like this is, this is not the same as you coming to us and saying, hey, we hear you're working on housing and we'd like to contribute. You are gaining something out of this, which is fine. There are things that can be mutual, uh, beneficial to both of us at the same time. I'm not faulting you for doing that. But I just want to be clear that part of the reason this is happening is your regulator is questioning. Whether their permit and the reasons they gave you, they granted you the, uh, exemption are legit. So I just, for the record, I think that needs to be on the record is that this is why we're submitting comments to FSEC to follow up. Because our concern is that we did not see the community benefit. You are asking us to further reduce the community benefit by lowering. The taxes that you will pay on it. And in addition, you are taking additionally reach out of. Farming and which was another exemption, um, that you were able to receive. So. Or, or argue should be used for your exemption. So. I appreciate that you were working with us on that front. But I just want to be clear that it was at your regulator's behest, um, that you are working with us. Not just because you suddenly decided you wanted to invest in the community.
Well, we, we have made an investment in the community and we, we actually documented and sent it into the record. So for the record, we've documented over like. As of a few months ago, like we had four point five million dollars of local spend that our contractors then, then track. And that. Is local spend that's within a hundred miles of the project area, which some of that leaves the county for sure.
We have this discussion every time.
But there are not that many places to spend money within the county. And that is, that is not.
Okay. All I'm saying is the places that were there, it was not spent anyway.
And that's not an exactly fair statement either, Commissioner Shannon, because we did spend and we did document. We went back and asked our contractors. Now, whether or not the same levels that were spent by Mortensen, you're, you're right. They, they weren't fully documented. But I think this is a good time to pause and ask the people that we asked here to, that actually spent money within the county, that they can have a minute to like come talk. And let's hear their voices on how the actual people that some of them that live in the county live locally and, and have spent money.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll start off. My name is Donald. We're still, I'm with Laborers International in the Indian North America. So we do a little bit of everything, obviously. Solar and when they're both in our wheelhouse, we're on both these projects out here. Uh, I think it's, first off, I'm going to go back a little bit. I think it's more unfair to bring in, you know, contractors like Res. And, uh, you know, back, back when it, you know, the economy was doing a lot better, right? We're seeing inflation now. I got members with me today. All they do is travel. They do these projects all over the state. Uh, a lot of money is being spent here. You guys might not see it as much as you guys would like, but it, it is being spent. You know, whether it be hotels, food, unfortunately due to the housing out here. A lot of our members are driving the board. They gotta stay in board, man, or they're, you know, staying with a friend in common. We have members. We have members right here in this small community that are in our local also. So, I mean, we are here. It's.
I think, I think we, we're really talking about levels of spending and we can argue that all day long, what, you know, what that is. And, and as a commissioner who is very much involved with this community at all levels, has talked to all the business owners in the community and, and asked questions. But I don't just come in here and make a comment because some personal or, or anything else. I talked to all the members in this local area where, where you guys have been working. And that's where I come up with my opinion on, it, it just wasn't at a level that I had expected based on what was presented when we gave the exemption on the red zone.
So you guys are expecting more spending than this in Arlington itself or Gilliam as a whole?
Gillian County. For me, I'm a Gillian County commissioner. Doesn't matter where it's at, as long as it's in the county lines.
Right, because we got Mike Aldrich here. He lives in Gilliam himself. And, well, I'm sure he's been speaking on what he's been seeing from where he is from.
Mike Aldrich, I do, I'm a rural county lot founder resident. I represent ironworkers in eastern central Oregon. And I can say that, you know, we had a lot, all your RV spaces, if I had guys calling and trying to get RV spaces here that couldn't get it because of the work that was going on. But I also have ironworkers that have stayed in the community because they like the community. And it's kind of a good central location to get to these other projects. I've had lots of members staying here for a quarantine of time. I have retirees that live here and active members also.
One of the, one of the things that I noticed is when this project was done up here, we didn't get any movement from the, from Montag to Solar into the county making up the housing that it opened up. There's very little of that that happened. And then the other thing I'd say is that the housing that, that we did have, we offered because there was some conversations with union and, and the contractor about doing some dry camp housing out of Shutter Flat. And we made that available, made some zoning changes so we could do that. Went through a process that took several weeks or a month or so to go through that process to do that. And we didn't get one trailer after your people were requesting that we set something up so we could have some housing of some sort available, even if it was going to be honey pumpers to pump them out and run them off generators. We didn't get one trailer. We went through a considerable effort to make that available.
Yeah, that was requested by the guy.
Yeah, and I talked to Sterling Williams representatives. I don't remember who at the time. And of course, we were working with Omega Morgan. They had the lease on the property and they had to do a, a release for that, you know, you, some, it was going to be subbed out. So they had to give permission. They had a lease. So it was, you know, a planner back there. She didn't want to even go through the process, but I convinced her she had.
You like those hours back when you were young.
Commit to getting power and water over there.
No, no, we left it. They were going to have to do, I mean, at some point, we're, we're working on that. But at that point, if they wanted to use it, they were going to have to jump whatever hers was. It was a dry camp. We got them dry camped up here, you know, they've been dry camped down the island. It's not like dry camps haven't been used in Gillian County during the projects.
Yeah, but a lot of members in those dry camps. Those, those spots are highly appreciated. I just, I just want you to know as commissioners, these projects are important to not only Gillian County. I'm, you know, I'm a big advocate of rural order and born and raised here. And they're, they're very important to these members that do have a little bit of these rural areas because, and it also gives us as unions opportunities to get, to bring more apprentices in from each areas, which, you know, our apprentices lead into a lifelong career with very good retirements, family benefits.
We do appreciate what you've done. There's no question about that. It's just that there was, you know, in, in my opinion, I felt like there was going to be more benefit than what we actually saw.
Anybody else that wants to have comments with your group?
No, let me stand out the door.
Okay, uh, commissioners, where are we at?
I don't know. Where are we?
Okay, so we approved the letter. Where are we on the contributions, folks?
Judges, commissioners, I hear you.
Thank you.
Your firm is set on the fifteen hundred and I, and I hear it loud and clear. I'd like to then talk about if, if you're making a commitment, is what I hear, that you would approve the pilot so long as there's a fifteen hundred dollar per megawatt donation.
At fifty five hundred.
At fifty five hundred. Okay, I'm committing that to that today. Is there a risk around, like, the taxing districts, like, you know, having issue with that and that being?
Well, one of the taxing districts is the one who will receive the community contribution. I don't anticipate you guys are going to have any problems with that.
Two of them.
Um, one of the taxing districts was just in before you talking about how important housing is. Suspect if that money is helping on that, that school district will be okay. And then we have health and fire and cemetery. So I am not anticipating that, given that the intent is to actually build houses and this community understands the importance of that, that we're going to get much, much pushback.
I can about promise you won't get any, but.
Okay, I mean, you guys know the risk better than that. Like, I just, I mean, I agree with you, when we're receiving all this feedback to take the fifteen hundred dollars and make it towards our community contribution. But like, it would be, have to be, we have to discuss about the timing then.
Sure.
So again, it would have to be prior to the start of construction when we know that the, the project's moving.
I think we understand that.
And, and just, you know, realizing, like, there's a time value of money too. Like, where we normally wouldn't be spending that money if we're under, like, tax, like, it, whether it was seven thousand.
Right.
So you're, there's an advantage. There's a, there's a net present value. You're getting more out of that by the dollars. So it was beyond the fifteen, fifteen hundred. But if, if you're willing to.
I think some of that comes back to, for you, how do you want to be perceived in the community, you know, and it, it actually costs you more money, I get that, to come up front in any way than it would be to wait till the payment was.
How we're perceived in the county. I mean, you know, we've been here for a long time. And like, we've contributed tens of millions of dollars in tax revenue to the county. Like, our employees live within the county. We buy, you know, we, we buy and purchase within the county. We've been a good partner for Gill.
I'm not saying you're not, Brian. I'm saying it's probably not recognized at the level something like this would be.
Yeah.
It's not, the, the, the residents of this county don't understand those details of what's going on.
Right, we do. But if we're willing to, if there is a letter, the county's willing to, to support our permit and submit a warrant to FSEC that you support and that we would commit to the fifteen hundred dollars per megawatt and a donation that would be, and we could even commit to it, because we're already committed to the seventy five thousand dollars, right? That we could do now, and then the rest being continued on, like, project moving forward prior to the start of construction. We'd be going to do that with the, with the county letter support to FSEC.
So commissioners, if that is amenable to you, what I would need is your authority. I would go back and redraft slightly the letter that you just approved us sending.
So what do you have to do?
So basically.
Oh, you were just going to adjust the terms.
I would amend it to say that we have a tentative agreement.
Yep.
That this is the amount and that it would be provided prior to start of construction, which I, which was one of the things we recommended, split between the two. And that based on this agreement, we feel like that that contribution would sufficiently meet the community benefits and the, and would mitigate the impact to agricultural production that we had raised concerns about in the permitting process. So it would be basically just altering some and rather than making it a recommendation, basically outlining this is, this is basically where we have reached a tentative agreement. And then I think for follow up on your end, it would be going to the, back to those two community entities, getting that in writing ASAP. Because as soon as we see those and understand the ports and the, I, my understanding, at least on SWCD, is that their legal counsel has looked at it and feels good about the rest of the language. They were just waiting on the amounts and timing and is that same with port? So those should be pretty simple things for them to do. And then I could honestly probably ask all three entities to time our approvals so that we approve the pilot at the same time that these two entities are approving or within a day approving their agreements. So that, to your point about us backing out on the pilot, you are sure that they're all going forward together as a sort of package consideration. Is that, does that sound right, commissioners?
Do we have to have a motion on all that?
Can we just say so moved?
No, the vast majority of stuff does not need a motion. What I need you to do is authorize me, how about this?
And then, and then, all right.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion. So I move to authorize the county judge to, to amend the approved comments to FSEC. The amendment being to stipulate that a tentative agreement has been reached and detailing basically what is already in here, which is the fifteen hundred before construction starts. And that, that we feel satisfies the community benefit and also the impact to agriculture that we had raised concerns about. I'll, I'll summarize it for you. So it's a moved and seconded that you authorize, that we authorize the county judge to amend the comments to the FSEC Facility Siding Council. Those comments being amended to reflect that a tentative agreement has been reached for fifteen hundred total per megawatt, split between two entities, provided prior, in a lump sum prior to the beginning of construction. And to further clarify that we believe with this tentative agreement that our concerns regarding agriculture and community benefit have been resolved. Is there further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. Absolutely. And we, as soon as we go finish up here, we will go back to comment and I will redraft and let it submit. All right, guys. Sounds like, thank you. On your follow up spin, the, there's two port commissioners right behind you. Judd's on here. So I think the sooner we can wrap up those agreements, like I said, that there's maybe one or two issues in the pilot that our attorneys reviewing. So I think we could possibly have it on the next agenda for approval, but we'll see if it's.
It's not going to be the same time, Wednesday, five P M. The week prior to the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, and then I'll, we may need to alter that depending on when the port is meeting and when SWCD can get it approved, but.
I think the port met yesterday, is that right?
So water met yesterday.
We, we may ask our partners if they might consider a quick Zoom special meeting to approve their documents so that they can all go together.
Okay.
Perfect. Okay. Anything else on this piece?
No, thank you guys.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a break? I lost three, need a break. Can we take a quick, can we take a quick five minutes and come back at seven thirty five? Destroyed the little Gillon County title. What do you?
We're unmuted.
Okay, we are back in session. It is 11:36. We are gonna just race through the rest of the agenda.
Are we?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, no.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, we did add something on.
We did add.
Some of these are gonna be really, okay. So 5.2 is Consider Approval Resolution Number R 2023-01, requesting a boundary change for economic development districts. You are probably wondering why this is back on our agenda since we approved it back on December 21st. So we approved it. I signed it and sent it off to McHead and G O D C. G O D C came back and said, hey, by the way, we've added two counties and those are not listed in the resolution. So literally the resolution just is amended to make sure that all of the counties in G O D C are appropriately listed. And then it also just suggests the dates and the obviously the resolution number. And other than that, there are no changes.
Oh, so in the motion is this as amended?
I would do as presented because it's a brand new resolution. So we'll just sign this one and send it off.
All right, I move to approve resolution number R 2023-01 as presented.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution number R 2023-01 as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Bye.
I'm in. You post? Motion carries. Right, point three is Gillon County Public Health update. Leah.
Okay, so on Monday, January 9th, Delaney and I met with Holly and Winslow, Daylene Wilson and Lisa Helms, who is a board member of the South Gillon Health District. And we, we discussed the risk assessment that Duane, Nathan and Sherry had done in November. And Holly told us to, that she amended the amount that we had on it, which we did. So that put the risk, risk assessment score at 45 and in the medium range, which the medium range is 41 to 74, which it's gonna be hard to get that any lower because of the amount of time that.
So lower is good?
Yes.
Yes, high risk starts getting all kinds of stuff coming in, so.
And so really the risk assessment matrix just is about the monitoring level that we would impose on them. So because they are a medium risk, we are required to do audit reviews, expenditure reviews and desk monitoring. Once they move into the low category, it just goes down to audit and expenditure review. So there's not much difference between the two scores.
Can you define what desk monitoring?
I emailed, like what that is, because I don't know what that's, what they meant about that either. And so I'm waiting for them to tell us. We waited to figure out all of our plans until we had a discussion with the health district. So once we had our meeting, I emailed Andrew and I was like, what does this desk monitoring mean exactly? And I had heard that, but I would assume it means some sort of like onsite monitoring at periods of time, which Gillon County would have that role with Holly probably as our administrator.
And we also looked at the subcontractor monitoring policy. And I was kind of confused about how that, I thought that was it. But it was more, I think she was looking for more, Holly, more of like the plan, what we were gonna do going forward. So part of that plan was to meet monthly. So we scheduled a meeting for February and we're gonna meet monthly till at least June. Then we will revisit how we wanna do stuff going forward. They will, she, I think she's working right now on the, the the OHA, their revenue report.
Their quarterly revenue.
Yeah.
So those are turned in quarterly the month after the end of the quarter. And the one for the first quarter is included in your packet and they're included in working on quarter two.
Yeah, along with the risk assessments in there. So I think she's working on that right now. So we kind of expect to see that in February. We discussed ideas about how to reach the public, do a better job of that, especially on the counties end. So we came up with a few ideas. We're still working on that. They did say that they had done, they had a immunization clinic in Arlington. I think they've completed that now.
Two now.
Yeah, and then they have to do a report to state anybody that's non-compliant, I believe. And then.
One of the things regarding the public had asked for their updates not to be provided verbally, but to put that in writing. So Leah and I drafted an update form template that they will be using for their monthly, for the updates will be provided to the port in the future. And those will be continued to submit monthly. So that's something to note. And regarding immunization clinics, one thing is that North Central Public Health District had previously charged Arlington Clinic for those immunization clinics, even though it's a public health service, so they shouldn't have charged the clinic for the time to do it. Whereas Gillon County Public Health is not asking the clinic to cover a charge for providing that service. So that was one of the differences there with that.
It's kind of a double difference.
So was that, that was going on for sure?
That's what has our understanding.
Was that for sure? Or was that just stated? I just, I was on the board.
I have not reached out to North Central Public Health to confirm that fact, no.
I would like to, I would like to learn that when I was on the board for fact, but yeah.
To Arlington Clinic. I don't know if they provided that information to Holly, but.
It was stated to us at the meeting, so I would like to assume that the sources were about.
Can you guys just speak briefly to the triennial review? And what's happening with that and the timing? So.
That will take place in September, I believe.
Yeah, OHA does triennial reviews of all of their public health districts that operate. And we could have, or not we, Gillon County Public Health could have waited for one in three years. They opted to do one this September to make sure that they have a good review and can make sure that they are.
That's a really good idea.
Aligned with everything with OHA. So that way, when they have their next one, they're not having done things wrong for three years. They have a chance to correct and get that stuff figured out. So I thought that was a great thing to know.
And as a post note, after we did all this, we will have a phone call with the OHA on Monday at 11:00. And that'll be on fiscal.
It's, they're having some funding issues with OHA. OHA is not providing the amount of money that they have said that they are according to their monthly reports that they're sending. And when Holly had previously met with OHA, they argued with each other, OHA did, about if they were sending the money properly or not. So I hope this meeting is to follow that up. So hopefully OHA has their ducks in a row now and can provide a status update to the Holly about what the funds are at.
I was saying, it's nice when the state agency doesn't agree with us.
So we're gonna sit in on that call on Monday. So and I think Nathan will be on that call as well. So anything else add? I, I think the, the meeting went well and so.
Any questions?
I have a couple of.
Commissioners or public for.
Couple of quick questions in. I've been asked and curious since Daylene came on with them for the purpose of the feasibility study, what is her capacity now and title within this as it pertains to public health?
Well, I think she does a lot of the.
I don't know her official title, but I would in essence call her some sort of program manager. She does a lot of the reporting for WIC and is working on the baby's first training and stuff like that. So she is really implementing a lot of the public health programs and working to develop plans for them is what I would say.
People ask, I'd like, they'll say, well, this is what she's doing.
I think she's been on some meetings. I've been on, I think she introduced herself as the public health manager.
So. And then I, I was just looking through, it shows the page in this packet with resources, Gillon County Public Health, and it shows the Gillon County contribution at 124.5. And I thought her contribution was about 150.
No, it's the 124 because it's divided up.
Oh, are we paying directly to environmental services?
That's what we pay directly to Gillon County, North, South Gillon County Health District does that one.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because public health in North Central, that last, after the last 3%, I believe was around 138,000. It was projected to go to somewhere around 150 soon. And I, but that's what it is. It's part of that's going to Umatilla County.
Yes, there's a portion of those ones and that's, I think.
Any, any other questions, Pat?
No. I thought, I thought we were gonna run those fees through them and it was all, it didn't matter.
So the way the funding for public health works is OHA submits remittance advices for the monthly amount that is due. That money goes to Gillon County and then in turn Holly is submitting an AP invoice for those amounts off those remittance advices to send to the health district.
Yeah, I wasn't so worried about, I was talking about the statement. I was talking about the Gillon County contribution. And I, I guess I was kind of under the understanding when we went through it, that it was all gonna go to South Gillon and then they were gonna subcontract you, then we directly contracted you in Umatilla County.
Yeah, so we send the contribution directly to Umatilla County. I think questions, any questions from the public?
I appreciate the update in writing and I do hope that they do a little more outreach. But this is a big improvement.
Thank you. Karen, the chamber would love to help with marketing for the clinic. If you need any assistance with getting the business optimized on Google My Business and creating a Facebook page or something along those lines. Get flyers hung up in the, in the businesses around town, just to get that in front of the base of your business.
That would be great. We can put that on our next agenda.
Happy to help.
Great. Thank you. Love it. Thank you.
Oh, one other thing. At some point down the road, for the purpose of aligning everything, reporting wise, wouldn't it be better if public health went there eventually instead of there so that she was working through our?
Oh, through Miranda.
Our.
As like.
Instead of through yours?
Well, and we discussed that at first, but I, here I was a newbie that knew nothing. Miranda was in the same boat as I was as far as public health.
I said in the future, wouldn't that be?
So we.
I am happy to loan Delaney, but I suspect she'd be happy to.
I would be happy to. If requested by the commissioner.
We are here to serve, Pat, so. And you know, and maybe as I learn, get my feet under me that.
It might be a year out or something.
Yeah.
I just think it's something that lines the reporting better than what we're doing, crossing some lines.
Yep, but I, it's like, I mean, I spent the weekend before we had this meeting. I spent going back and reading minutes that had to do with that. I looked at documents. I watched meetings.
She'll get there pretty quick.
By Sunday night, my head is just going, ugh.
I'm just thinking with the triennial review, because that not only will we be reviewing what the health district is doing internally, it's also checking, do we have all of our policies on our end? That might be a good time. Maybe Miranda and Delaney can both help Commissioner Watkins through that, the county's piece of the review. And then I think that will give Miranda more. Yeah, a base of knowledge to understand like, oh, here's where all the documents go and, and all of the things that are expected so that the handoff is not just, here you go, here's public. And the litany of things that OHA requires of us. So, but yeah, there's no objections from Delaney or I am passing that over to Miranda at any point.
Not yet.
Not yet. Well, it's up to you. Like I said, she's on.
And I'm saying, not yet.
Anything else on this point? If not, related to this is 5.4, which is Consider Approval Amendment Number Three to Fiscal Agreement, Number 169508 with Oregon Health Authority. Delaney.
Do you want me to do it?
Whoever.
So this was another one of those intergovernmental agreements. The financing department, we're gonna see these a lot. I think, is this the third?
Yeah.
And so Holly submitted a statement to us that, and you can see it's, it added additional $37,747 to the tobacco, which they're gonna use it for products to.
For tobacco.
Yeah, yeah. And then they, and then once they get their plan in place, they'll implement the stuff in both clinics. So, but they have to get that in place. And I think it was unexpected in that.
Valid measure 108.
Oh, yeah.
We just didn't know the amount we would get from that valid measure, but this, they finally sent out what the amount of tobacco prevention education dollars would be.
Questions? Make it a motion to approve the amendment.
I move to approve amendment number three to intergovernmental agreement, number 169508 with Oregon Health Authority as presented.
Second.
So move down, seconded that we approve amendment number three to intergovernmental agreement, number 169508 with Oregon Health Authority as presented. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? I, I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's move into 5.5, Small Business Grant Program update from Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce. Just as a note in the future, if we ever have these pilots, we're gonna put them at last on the agenda.
I, I actually learned a lot today.
Management, reading patiently to share. Don't have to listen to energy site.
It was very interesting. Expiring to be part of a conversation too, where we're advocating for our county. And I'm finding myself in, in this position at the state with legislatures where we can connect government to where their dollars make a difference in our community. And I want to thank Gillon County for your support this last year as we launched the Gillon County Small Business Grant Program. As you can see from the report we provided, it was what I would, would count as a success. So here to update you on the grant program today, I'd like to suggest revising the memorandum of understanding to better fit the needs of Gillon County community businesses moving forward. And then also request the $75,000 installment for the grant program moving forward in 2023. As you guys could see in the report that I provided, that we funded 14 businesses, $117,500 funded. In total, 22 applications have been submitted. Two were withdrawn, two were denied. And right now we have four that are in the portal to be considered for funding. One is a business that will be in transition, that the applicant is looking for acquisition. And the way that the current grant program is set up with the three structures of new business, existing business or one-time support, my recommendation is that we actually create one grant program. We found that it's limited our opportunity to really lean in and support the businesses because I have a great grant committee, but they are particular to making sure people fit under certain categories. And as an advocate for these businesses, I find that it's really limiting ways that we can lean in and support. One of the businesses in the portal is a home-based childcare business as well. One is for. One is for expansion for meat processing, and the other is an essential business needing some help of construction and necessary costs to operating their business. So any questions on the grant program or the report that we provided?
Just to comment, I guess, in having assisted somebody kind of go through this. I would, I see there's about three or four that are partially funded, and that one was also partially funded, and I guess I would just. And I, and I don't know the process, you and I have a conversation someplace later, I understood you were completely supportive of everything else, but the partial funding at the ask when they're in there, be caught, hopefully the committee's being cautious that they're not underfunding grants that will cause those businesses to fail and not be successful. Because, you know, I can, I can see where that could be an issue, just trying to stay in control of what's going on and, and, you know, and I'm not sure how you get where you get with these, because I don't know the process, but if, if you're going to say okay to so many dollars, doesn't it make sense to say okay to all of them when they ask? You know, especially when there's some, obviously some other money, and they've got their own teeth in the game too.
Right.
As an administrator of the grant program, I always lean towards advocating for that business. I do feel like we have a really great process in place in which the application is submitted. It's vetted to make sure that if all the pieces are there, including a business plan, potential projections, financial projections, make sure that we're doing our due diligence. Also funding a business that is going to be successful and sustainable with or without this funding, right? Because we don't want businesses depending on grant funding for long term. However, we do want to lean in and support where we can. What I love about this program and the way that we're structuring it moving forward is those businesses can come back again this year. So two thousand twenty two, two thousand twenty three, just really being able to assess the applications on a case-by-case basis. Any other comments, commissioners?
So commissioners, I think if you, what we would be doing is we would be bringing back the memorandum of understanding just to give you a sense, like currently, I think it's a pretty simple change, really. Currently, I think that agreement, I don't have it offhand, but if I recall, we specifically said we wanted three grant programs that addressed X, Y, and Z. And so the idea would be rather than say we want three distinct where you have to do separate applications, all those kinds of things. It would be one grant program, but it can still cover all of those things. So just from an administrative standpoint, it's like the business owner is not trying to figure out, okay, well, which one actually fits? And there are some weird ones where there's like an existing business that's being passed on to somebody new. Well, do you treat that as an existing business? Do you treat that as a new, like, I think that's where the grant committee has kind of struggled. Well, if it's one grant program, it doesn't matter whether it's new or it's all coming out of the same pool. And so I think that's really the intent is, I think when we are looking at it, it's like a couple of words that we just need to adjust that basically.
Some of that's maybe, and just in the idea of retention. How do you retain a, a business that may not be retained if you don't get somebody else to come in and take it over?
Exactly.
That's, that's exactly it, and, and that transition period, right? Where we have someone who's coming into an existing business that's been there for thirty years, well, they're not a new business. And making sure that we're leaning in to support them following this grant funding thirty, sixty, ninety days afterwards. We are really wanting to make sure that your investment is going through with a very thoughtful approach to supporting community and business.
So if the commissioners are on board in general with this concept of basically rather than having three distinct programs, one that is still doing those three, supporting those three needs. I would just work with Kaylin and our legal counsel to just clean up. I think it's just like literally a couple of words that we need to change, it's not a big change. And we would just bring it back for formal approval, probably stick it on the consent agenda since it is, we've been talking about it, and it's, it's not a significant change. Is, does that, would you like me to do that? Okay, question on the money, the two thousand three, twenty three money. Is that, we have talked previously and under the memorandum, if, if you run out sort of mid-year, like we're prepared potentially to replenish, are you asking for us to replenish? Or are you asking for the money that would be coming to you?
Annually.
In the fiscal, when the fiscal year rolls over?
We are looking to add an additional seventy five thousand to the existing grant program. Right now we have thirty thousand five hundred dollars that's there unclaimed, but as I mentioned, we have four applicants in that grant portal. And so just to move, be able to move forward with comfortable confidence, to be able to lean in and assist those businesses. I've also taken it offline to be able to present this information to you, make sure that you guys feel good about this program moving forward. The committee sees this as an opportunity to refine the grant program, making sure that if you have concerns, that we're answering those. And then opening it up, I was hoping for February first, but if we need to extend that date further until it's been approved at the county level.
I think you could probably plan to open it on the second. We meet on the first, and so I think you would have an approval then, but, or even the afternoon of the, of the first, because we would approve it in the morning. On the, so commissioners, related to the release of funds, the way we have done this previously, it could, it could be either way. We can either take what would normally be coming out July one, that's already agreed to, and we can front the money. In other words, that we're moving it, we're giving it, dispersing it five months early. And then if in twenty, the next fiscal year you run out, come see us again, or we can just replenish, put the other seventy five thousand in, but come July one, under the contract, there would be an additional seventy five thousand. So it depends on if you just want us to move the money up, and if so, we would bring a letter of agreement capturing that, or if you would like to just replenish and then have the seventy five thousand come out again, so it'd be a total over the next six months, eight months of one hundred and fifty thousand.
I know you can't predict this, Kaylin, but my struggle in that is if, if it's a one-time seventy five thousand, then is that what you're asking for? Are you asking for the program to be extended to?
The way I understand the memorandum of understanding was the county made a three-year commitment at seventy five thousand a year, and that was our base, our base commitment. So I'm simply coming to you saying we're ready for funding, however you guys want it to do it. I'd just like to see.
I think it looks different, and you can't see in the future, but I think it looks different if we're just going to give you another seventy five thousand, because you happen to have the needs right now that it does, we're going to expand the program by seventy five thousand annually. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so the way we handled this previously was we did it for, through a letter of agreement. So we basically just stipulated, okay, we're going to take funds, as I think it was last springtime, again, that that money ran low. And so we just said, okay, the money that was due to you July one, we're actually going to disperse, you know, February fifteenth or whatever it is. And then with the stipulation that if you run low again in the next fiscal year, you come back and see us, so it can be either way.
I guess I just kind of think that maybe from the county side and staying closer to the program, that the ask to fill in is better than the expanding the program. And then we're in communications on what, what's going on currently during those time periods with businesses coming in. When we may hit a deal where we've got a substantial amount of businesses that want to be startup businesses that make a lot of sense. And we'd have to react to that.
So I think it sounds like then, does that sound good to you?
So how much do you have that's sitting there and how much?
Thirty thousand five hundred is sitting in the.
You said you had four, four businesses in the portal?
Yes.
So how much are they asking for?
Sixty thousand.
Oh.
We capped the grant program at fifteen thousand this last year. And also, that was what I wanted to ask you guys, are you comfortable with, with fifteen thousand being the cap? Would you like to see us maybe open it up to twenty?
I'm, I think it's hard to put a fifteen thousand dollar cap because every circumstance is absolutely completely different. But I don't know how you put any cap on when you consider that.
Right, yeah, we, in the agreement, really left it up to the chamber to, and their grant committee, to figure out what the guidelines should be. I think maybe the one thing that I would like to encourage the committee to consider is if a business is leveraging outside dollars and they're looking for the chamber's money to match. I don't want them leaving money on the table, say with Business Oregon or somebody else.
Because they can.
Because they can come up with the matching, because they can only leverage a certain amount, so not that 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 should set the limit, but I would encourage, like, if a business owner is clearly chasing money from different places, which is what we want, ultimately want them to be doing, is using this funds to leverage whatever they need to be a success, that we help meet those matches and things like that to the best that you can. I mean, I don't know if it's reasonable to match a hundred thousand dollars, but you know, for a lot of these programs, it's maybe twenty or thirty thousand to actually.
Thousand might get them in.
Yeah, so I, I, I don't necessarily think actually you need to have a set cap. There seems to be consensus of the court that if you run low on money, we would like to continue to support and meet that community need, that we see value in that. And so if somebody has come, you know, somebody decides they're going to reopen the roundup, it's going to take more than fifteen thousand to get that building ready to go. And so I would not want to see us closing the door on being able to provide some support if we, especially if it's being used to help leverage other donors.
Yeah, I agree completely, and I'd like to stay in such good communication with the commissioners that every three months you're getting a report, so you know where we're at. You know, if I might be coming in in the next couple of months, just to, again, say that this program is making a difference.
So we still have lots of empty buildings everywhere.
The Imagine Your Business Here sign posters just arrived in our office on Friday, so we hope to get those out.
Commissioners, are you familiar with that? Did you hear about that, Leah?
No.
Would you like her to give just a brief, what, what this is?
So we won a pitch contest at the Oregon Main Street Conference from AARP to launch a campaign called Imagine Your Business Here, and it's multi-level. But in, in theory, you put a nice, attractive, beautiful poster in our vacant building, some of which are boarded up or just have a for sale sign in it, gets them to the chamber website where we have information about the MLS, MLS listing on that building, local realtors, the chamber SBDC, Business Oregon, so that they can start really thinking about, you know, maybe imagining their business here. Also, there's the other vacant buildings in the Tri-County region. Deeper than that, we're going to open the doors during our community event, so July first, LaRue Insurance, the roundup. Any of our vacant buildings on Main Street will be opened with somebody in there to share about what it is like to run a business in Gillum County. And then we'll have sample business plans as well, so people can see what a return on investment could look like in that space, working with our business students at the high school, so planting that seed for our youth to think about potentially staying here. On the conversation of Main Street, I want to mention, I had a conversation yesterday with Matt of Main Street America. This pilot program that we have launched this last year is they're looking to take it nationwide. I knew we had a good thing going, they are looking to lean in significantly to Oregon Main Street to develop and build this program out. There are five other communities in the state of Oregon that are looking at replicating our model. So Condon, Gillum County, we are getting out there and sharing what innovative ways to supporting our rural communities looks like. And sharing that the county has been at the forefront for all of this, you know, progression. I wake up every day so thankful for this opportunity. You have helped the chamber become so much more than what it was, so. And we're making a difference.
Yeah, it's clear.
Yeah.
So commissioners, it sounds like from Commissioner Shannon's comments, that the preference would be to move up the payment for the fiscal year to as soon as possible. So if you are open to that, I will go ahead and make a motion so that that could get moving. Does that sound good? Okay, here's the motion. Move to approve providing the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four payment to the Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce for the Gillum County Small Business Grant Program in the amount of eighty two thousand five hundred, with, with seventy five thousand for grant funds and seven thousand five hundred for administrative fees on February first, twenty twenty three, and to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute a letter of agreement reflecting the same. Okay. Let's move down second that we approved providing, good staff work, Delaney, providing the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four payment to the Oregon Frontier Chamber of Commerce for the Gillum County Small Business Grant Program in the amount of eighty two thousand five hundred dollars, seventy five thousand for grant funds, seven thousand five hundred for administrative fees on February first, twenty twenty three, to authorize the county judge to prepare and execute a letter of agreement reflecting the same. Is a further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we will get that letter of agreement, and then we will bring the memorandum of understanding.
I'm rubbing that.
Back for the February first meeting, so I would think like February first in the afternoon, you should have both funding and approval to move forward, so.
Thank you so much from Gillum County. Gillum County businesses, thank you too.
Absolutely. Okay, guys, risk management has been leaning so patiently in the back. Let's go into six point one, presentation regarding possible RNG plant at Columbia Ridge. Leah and Jim.
I'll stand up.
Stretch your legs.
Just for our, Chris, you're welcome, Chris Shannon, I just.
Watkins.
Watkins, sorry.
That's okay.
They just, they just changed.
They had to keep the W.
Yeah. You know, just want to, right before you, where risk management is, has picked, originally landfill, one of five facilities, cross the mission to sponsor what we call RNG project, renewable natural gas project. It takes our landfill gas, separates some of the materials from it, and we get natural gas from that. Yes, that goes into a pipeline, and it's, it's what's known as renewable natural gas. Very beneficial to the, to the environment, doing it that way, sort of flaring it up. You know, then can use those, that renewable natural gas to run our, our trucks as they collect waste or run other sustainable projects that we have moving on. We wanted to come to you, talk to you about it first, tell you, talk to some of you about it already. Kind of the next step in the process is starting to apply for permits for these projects. Number one is air permit for the RNG facility. The, the interesting thing about the RNG facility, when we talked to the state about air permitting, it was like, wait a minute, you're asking us to lower, lay the lower your emissions from the landfill? So it's a fairly significant decrease over the overall emissions in the landfill, which is good for everybody, good for the county, good for everyone. And it's, it's blazing new trails, right? As I said, this is one of five, four have already been constructed, they're operating, working great. The additional thing we're working on is what's called a sequestration well, so we take the CO2 that separated, landfill gas is roughly fifty percent methane, fifty percent CO2. That CO2, you know, can be flared off in the atmosphere, or we can, in this state, in this, in these conditions, put that into what's called a sequestration well, very deep well, lots and lots of permitting, it has to go on with that, three different ones. But ultimately, what we do is we sequester that carpet, so good for everybody. The, the interesting thing about this particular area is basalt here, right? It's the volcanic rock that underlies everything here. There's a very large area of basalt, very deep, twenty three to twenty eight, three thousand feet deep. area of of basalt, uh very deep, twenty-three to twenty-three thousand feet deep that extends from a little bit uh south of the Oregon border to British Columbia, it's huge. When you inject CO2 into that basalt structure, it becomes what they call mineralized, and it stabilizes it. It no longer, a gas is no longer liquid, it can't get out, it it's the perfect solution, so. This is the sole thing, so as I said, uh air permit is first with the RNG. Uh, we have three different permits with the sequestration, well, all of these things are going to be public uh processes, so we want to make sure that you all know about it first, uh we need to talk with Michelle about Lux for the air permit piece, but wanted to come before you, let you guys know about it. It's a, it's a huge investment on Risk Management's part, over a hundred million dollars on this facility, and that's not including the well. And uh but it's because Risk Management is committed to uh putting these facilities in areas that believe in sustainability, and and this county absolutely does. Sorry, a little emotional here, but you guys have supported everything, uh our landfill, landfill gas, energy, solar, wind, all of that, you're the leaders in the state, probably the country, right? So that that's the reason why Risk Management is investing in the amount of money they're doing it. And in in the thirty years that I've worked for Risk Management, I have two, had two projects that I've worked on that have been life changers, for me, one was a food waste to um to methane project that I was instrumental on, uh and this one, because it has the biggest impact on one of the largest landfills uh in the nation, so I just really appreciate your your support and your time, and if you have questions, you know, don't hesitate to to call me or Leah, uh but there will be more communications during our, you know, to talk about it with our, in our forums first after this, and then we'll start ads and stuff like that, so hopefully get Kate, if you guys have any questions.
Commissioner, some questions?
Um, no, I guess the one, and I like to, at least when we have the Waste Management conversations, is announce a potential conflict, but I do not believe it's a conflict, she's trying to retire.
Yep.
Trying, being the opposite word there.
We're not asking you for an approval.
So, but I, but I, one thing that did come up, and I did hear because of where I live, that there was talk about putting the natural gas in the existing pipeline.
Yeah, we did hear, I did.
And then Merkley and according to the mayor of Merkley and.
Yeah.
So I I just wonder, would, I might, and I thought I might reach out to Dan Mar and just kind of have the discussion, as Merkley and Wyden are doing their deal with that. This, this where you're producing methane gas in a landfill in a place where to go.
Right.
You know, there should be some room for something like that to happen.
And and you know, to be fair, I understand why they're trying to do it there, but it it's this holy moly way over here, you know, forgetting about everything else, and we we have to talk to them. With your help, you know, definitely, um, you know, that part of the project, the pipeline part of the project's being done by a a third-party partner, not us, uh because that's, they do that every day. But yeah, uh, you know, there's a lot of legislation flying around everywhere about everything, you know, and we need to come to some reason for this, um especially when it's a project of this magnitude, has this much benefit to it, right? The the emissions from pipelines, you know, potentially nothing compared to what could come from a landfill, you know, so we're, you know, we're aware of it, and I think they're, I don't know if they're trying to build support, they're trying, but they're just kind of letting it out there, because we, we have to help them understand why it's.
Sure.
Not a good idea.
Well, I think both uh their regional staffers are always reaching out to us, we just saw uh Senator Merkley on Sunday, so I think maybe even inviting, I don't know if either have toured.
No.
Well, actually, Dan asked me to get a tour set up for him.
Let's do that.
He said, we, after we did the Sunday deal, we'll hook up and and I said he could have a one-on-one out there.
Absolutely.
I think we could bring in Kathleen Kathy from Wyden's office as well, I don't know if she's, I mean, she's been a longer time staffer, so she may have been there at some.
But it's changed a bunch over years too.
Yeah, I I mean, uh again, I can't tell how important your support are to these projects and to us, to Waste Management, and to the it serves not only this community, but the this context and entire world, uh you know, we we um we want them to come out, we want to to speak our case, like, yes, we're.
Educate.
Educate. You're good at this.
Don't make his head big.
He's got hundreds of himself now.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to to post any kind of a tour anytime we were, uh we're meeting with a very large U S Department of Energy lab tomorrow about the sequestration well, they've been doing eleven years with the research on the, on those types of wells, and they're the leading world expert in it, and so we're going to be, they're going to be one of our advisors and helpers, so.
Yeah, the only thing I think from our end that I would just encourage is uh make sure that you're looping in Michelle as early as possible, so if there's anything on the permitting side that we're up to speed and sort of within the timelines that you're looking at, um so that as you guys figure out planning, it's always takes longer than you think it's going to, and so the more that Michelle. Exactly.
No, I I talked to her when we were talking.
Perfect.
And I wanted to talk to you for first before.
Great. Any other questions, feedback, anybody on the Zoom or in the room that has questions about? I'm just fascinated by what they can come up with, go ahead.
Are you guys replacing the methane lab out there or on top of it? Like the renewable lab already out there?
Field gas energy?
Yeah.
No, it's going to be in the conference. We have agreements with City Seattle to provide power, renewable power, it's just air permitting wise, um we can't really add more engines because of the emissions from the engines, so what we're trying to do is reduce the emissions using this plan. A lot of it is to have more emissions on the other side, so it it it's a huge offset, but those are still.
Okay, I think how about jobs created?
So we don't expect a whole lot of jobs, to be honest, when you create it, there may be five or ten, but these plants are pretty well automated and can be run from anywhere in the world, but yeah, that we expect the existing landfill gas, the energy folks that are working on the engines to be able to work on this too, so. Thank you.
Any other questions, feedback?
Thanks.
All right, looking forward to hearing how it progresses. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for bearing with us while we went through all this agenda. Um, okay, six point two, discussion regarding road maintenance fee fund for Cedar Springs Road.
Yeah, once again, potential conflict, but not really. And I, and I, as a road commissioner, and it's a huge impact on our budget now we look at, I've really been spending a lot of time trying to figure out how the road maintenance fund works and how we um repaid Cedar Springs Lane primarily is what we're working at now, and it's been an interesting process getting the numbers together, figuring out where we're at, but it appears from both some information I got from Waste Management and what Nathan finally provided to me on uh the county side, that there's a million, three or so that have gone into that fund that's available for the repaid job that we want to budget for, and we, and I have um sent emails and notified that we're planning on doing that in two thousand and twenty-three. And the, just so the other court members know, the the projections for the, or the expense on that, or the, they're not quotes, but they're projected costs that Dewey's received, one of them is at one point two with Knife River, and the other one's a little over one point four with Kerr. So it's all kind of in that range, obviously, the county has twenty percent of that total cost that they're supposed to pay for, and in all my researches, I've gone through this, there's been two um chip seals on that road, one of which was done in two thousand and ten, and one was done in two thousand and fifteen, and it appears the one that was done in two thousand and ten Waste Man paid you eighty percent, but the one that was done in two thousand and fifteen, they didn't, which.
Oh, got it.
Just, just for, I, and I'm not sure how all the funding, I mean, the money was there, it just didn't get applied anywhere for that particular project, and Dewey and I've had several conversations, because there's also fifty thousand a year that comes in on the Kim Waste Road Maintenance Fee that he's kind of used to maintain that road on an annual basis. And what I want him to do, which he has to track him, but we need to track it in our budget, so we know what's going on, because that agreement says that it's used for repairs on Cedar Springs Lane and any um residual from that amount of money is supposed to go into economic development, where putting the road. It disappears.
Got it, okay.
So we need to think about that as we go through the budget process, and how we want that to look in the budget and move it probably in the, at least in economic development fund, so it's going back out. I mean, we can justify that the road department's doing some economic development, we just can't quantify dollars and cents and what's going on, and I don't know that going clear back in history to try to figure out how much we spent annually on Cedar Springs Lane makes a lot of sense.
No.
But going forward, it'd be nice to get some tracking in place for those um two funds and make sure that we're following the way we're supposed to for the benefit of Waste Management in the county, because my deal on this is make sure that Waste Management is paying their fair share, and the county's not paying part of that.
Uh, just to point a clarification, because we haven't done a major repair, I think, since I've been on the court, um is that eighty-twenty split, is the county's contribution coming out of this?
No.
Fee fund, that is Waste Management's.
That's Waste Management's contribution.
Okay, got it, okay, that is the one.
Just because they've been planning ahead, well, that's three cents per ton in the host fees agreement. It's a, it's a part of the host fees agreement is a rate, road maintenance fee at three cents a ton. They have on their own started contributing six cents recently, twenty cents, and I think the last month was probably twenty-five cents to build that fund, so it will um, so the money will be there, and they don't have to get in their budget and go through a budget process to.
Okay.
So.
Okay, got it, so we should.
As long as we're communicating with them and those bigger projects are coming up, they're willing to donate to that fee, so they don't have.
Well, it's better than a here's your bill. Yeah. Okay, that means that is.
I just wanted to get you all up to speed on what was going on with that, but it looks like we're in good shape and funds available, they're there, and maybe the tracking's a little, been a little hard.
So timing of that project, is that next summer, Dewey, or when?
That's, that's the plan, kind of waiting for all of this to shake out, um we already have the rock produced.
Which will be part of our twenty percent.
Yeah, that will be part of our twenty percent there, uh getting, I'm starting, putting all my notes together and everything, so that we can get everybody to bid exactly out of the cap on the project, and then we'll.
How does that, just a question, maybe I'm not familiar enough with any of the back roads, while that road is tore up, how do, how will the employees be getting in and out of?
They'll do it similar to the way they do the freeway, they'll do one lane at a time.
Okay.
They'll do one lane, traffic, they'll have traffic control, um they'll do it, um it's only a five-mile project.
Okay.
Those, these big outfits will come in, they'll slam it out pretty fast.
And maybe we just need to make sure we're telling other uh non-employees who are already familiar, but people who may think they want to drive that route, that maybe they avoid that week or whatever.
It'll be, it'll be well signed, um and probably most of the work will be done at night. That's the way, that's the way these big paving outfits like to do it now, less impact to the public, and regardless of when they do it, they'll have the landfill traffic, they'll just be the.
The locals, the other locals, yeah.
Well, they have, they have less probably landfill traffic at night than they do during the day, so you don't have the, some, you're not going to have the off-road trucks and a lot of that stuff you'd have during the day. And then the, the other thing from the um county road department perspective is we plan to tie that contractor with the industrial park and and um pave the road that we build at the industrial park at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm actually going to have them look at some of the other areas in the industrial parks that that paving was put down in, in I think, two thousand and twelve, it's starting to show some distress. And at the time they're here, that would be the time to jump on and 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 do multiple projects at the same time, save everybody money that way.
Great. Uh, questions, feedback on this piece or the upcoming uh project? Okay, let's move into six point three, consider approval of resolutions number R twenty twenty-three dash zero two and R twenty twenty-three dash zero three. A declaring county vehicle surplus equipment, uh Shania is on, I'm assuming she's listening in, uh she might also dispatch and kind of interrupt sometime, so I will just kick us off, and then if you have questions, we'll try to get our uh on. Um, so basically, what you're looking at is two vehicles uh that uh transportation is requesting that we declare surplus. The first is a twenty twelve uh Toyota Raph four, it has a hundred and twenty-six thousand uh plus miles on it. Um, all of these public transportation vehicles are purchased with ODOT grant funds, and ODOT sets their expectations in terms of uh use before something can be surplus, so just to preface this, that both of these vehicles meet that, those expectations um for the state. Uh, vehicle was purchased by ODOT's Vehicle Replacement Grant back in twenty twelve. Um, as I said, it meets ODOT's mileage and age of vehicle to be cleared uh surplus, so the recommendation for this one in particular is that the vehicle be deemed a surplus, uh sold on, uh we've been selling them on the online public auction site, publicsurplus.com, the sheriff's office takes care of that for us with a minimum bid of seventy-six hundred. Um, the second vehicle is a, is a newer vehicle, but as you can see, well-loved, um it's a twenty seventeen Toyota Sienna, it has a a hundred and forty-seven thousand uh miles on it, again, meets, this was purchased by a fifty-three-ten grant from, or uh ODOT meets the minimum requirements for age and mileage. If approved, the recommendation is that it be deemed surplus and then donated to Summit Springs, they occasionally have need to transport their folks. Um, this would not, just, I, for people panic, public transportation will still pick up our residents at Summit Springs, this is just meant if Summit Springs has a need and say it's on a weekend or something where they maybe can't we're not providing service, that would give them the opportunity to use that, there is a letter in your packet from Summit Springs saying that they would be willing to accept it if the county decided to move forward. And as I said, all of these uh are, meet our funder's requirements, um so ODOT is perfectly okay with us circling them and donating them. The second one, um thus, the next biennium stiff gramps, I think, that are coming in, uh will have vehicle replacement funds in them, so um Shania, I think usually will be looking at the fleet, and then depending on what usage, um and which vehicles seem to be getting the most usage, she tends to move the fleet and buy according to what the public is saying they need, so if they need accessibility, they need four-wheel drive, um so it varies depending on what the replacement is, but all of those funds, just for the public record, are not tax dollars from us, they are state grants that are coming in for public transportation. Questions about either of these or concerns?
No, I don't think so, since it's not going to cost us anything.
It doesn't cost us a penny, um that brings some more money and uh when it gets surplus, and then Summit Springs will have a
Which is a good thing.
Nice vehicle, yeah, they can use.
That's uh not that old a rig, took quite a few miles on, but not that old a vehicle.
No, no, it should be, it's still in good shape, but it's got a lot of uh mileage, mileage from us, and clearly is, yeah, the drivers must like it. So I moved.
Run another train or thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, please, if I can.
I moved to adopt resolutions number R twenty twenty-three dash two and R twenty twenty-three dash three as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adopt resolutions number R twenty twenty-three dash two and R twenty twenty-three dash three as presented, is there further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I, any opposed, motion? Okay, we added at Commissioner Shannon's request, a discussion regarding CDL policy, do you want to kick us off?
Yeah, I'm going to punch a bolt, Delaney, pretty quick, but. Yeah, I'm gonna punch a bolt as Lani pretty quick, but.
She's ready to catch it.
Basically, um, with the new requirements to acquire a CDL license, it's becoming difficult. To figure out how to hire employees who don't have CDLs and maybe going into a CDL position. And we're looking at how that, what the county should do because, um, if you cannot. Find people or people are fine without CDLs that you want to hire, it's a rather expensive adventure to get a CDL license these days. I'm marrying numbers anywhere from five to eight nine thousand dollars. Switch brings into play, how many times do you let employees apply for their tests? And how many tests they get to take before they pass the CDL and. Uh, I'm assuming Dewey can probably fill this in, the more times you're in the system and trying to get a CDL and not getting it, the more expensive it's. Going to get, and we probably as a county need to decide how we want that to look. Um, because I think that we have to initially offer some sort of a program to acquire a CDL. To non-CDL applicants if we think they're the best applicant.
Do you have anything where you want to add?
Almost, almost every county in the state right now is having the exact same issue.
Yeah, we, we.
They're having to offer an incentive, basically. We will help you get your CDL, um, while you're in our heart.
So how does, and maybe, I don't know, I think Delaney was maybe looking at other counties' policies to see. I mean, one of the first things that comes up is, you know, we obviously always for our employees try to. Provide and encourage them to receive additional trainings, and so like, that in and of itself. Paying for somebody to be trained to be able to do the job is not necessarily heartburn to me, but it is expensive enough. Then I'm curious like how other counties have maybe approached, like say we front the cost for somebody to go to CL school, whatever that is. And then they end up, they can't pass the test, like, how do we, do we just go on to the next step? And go, and, and, or the other concern that I have is there are a lot of other people who are looking for people who have CDLs. And how do we? How do we make sure that they don't just walk right out the next day and take the next highest offer and then we have to go back to, I mean, I. We're not, this isn't a workforce development initiative, so I'm just curious like how we ensure that whatever investment we make. Not only does the person end up at the end being certified to do what we need them to do, but also they're not then saying. I'm giving two notice, uh, my two weeks notice and I'm gonna go take a, a job someplace else that's gonna pay me considerably more, go ahead.
So my son just went through those, this whole thing, proceeded as a decent mechanic. And his employer paid for everything, but he had to sign a three-year contract that he would not leave. Or else he would be.
Which you can enforce, by the way.
Yeah, uh, but I mean, it's.
Yeah, we can ask, and that's what a lot of the other counties have, they've done, um, like timetables with if you leave. Some of them have done it within the first year if they leave, some of them have done it up to four years and it's a percentage of that you pay back. If you leave within, let's say, one year, you pay back a hundred percent, two years is seventy-five, three years is fifty, four years is twenty-five. You make it to the five-year mark, you don't have to, but it's not completely enforceable. Like, and that's per CIS, CIS has, you can't really enforce them to do it, but you can put it in there that it's there, but it's.
It's one of those things, you have to be willing to take somebody to court over. Yeah, so, okay, uh, I, cause this is like, Leah is like our expert and then Pat's like. Coming right in underneath, so this whole thing is new to me, so please forgive like the questions, but. This school, is this like a six-week course, somebody goes to, like, they have a class that starts. February first and it's six weeks and you have to pay upfront, or how does that, how does, how does the training look? And the reason I'm asking that is I wonder. If there's a way for the county to, instead of trying to recoup money if somebody doesn't. Is there a way for us to say, pay installments, like maybe we take half of the risk and the. Employee takes half of the risk and if they are successful, we cover the whole thing in the end. But like midway through, if they totally bomb or don't stop going to class or whatever, that we have. Some protection so that the, we're not just, here's the money and then you're not certified and we end up having to start the process. So, I mean, I don't know if that's even feasible or if the employees would, prospective employee would say like, I don't have that kind of cash and. So I'm kind of trying to get a sense of what the actual.
That's fair to say that, that everybody's going through right now, the federal government just dumped this on, on everyone. Well, with our, with our rules and everything, the only thing somebody that doesn't have a CDL can operate is a pickup. Anything out on, on the public road, you have to have a CDL, so. You, you have to have it to get it done.
And it's expensive, and so speaking to the cost part of it, I don't know if it's exactly feasible for an applicant to pay. Two thousand dollars over a six-week period of time, because that's, the training courses are usually six weeks, six to eight is what I've been seeing. They don't have.
In starting a new, in starting a new job, the, the chances of having four to six thousand dollars in your pocket are, are pretty slim.
So is there like quite a few different schools they can attend?
There's one in Hermiston, there's a couple in the Tri-Cities, uh, there's one in Pendleton, I think that one in Hermiston and Pendleton are both the same. You can do it as a valley.
And there's a lot of it, my understanding is there's a lot of it you can do onsite at your location.
They haven't gotten back to me yet about what it would entail, because that's not, uh. An undoable thing to send somebody up there.
So now do you have to send the truck with them?
No, no.
They're, they're just going into classes.
There's extra amount of classroom time.
Okay.
And then, some of them, you, you go, you drive their truck, you, you basically, you do their work for them and they. They get paid, you pay them.
Some of the schools have a hybrid model.
Take your own.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe the drive test, know the certifying agent and they just take it to Oregon DMV and.
Well, I know like the school here, Mr. Davidson is the transportation specialist and he does all the training, he got certified to do the training themselves. Cause it was cost-effective, he trained the drivers themselves, he certified to give the test. They drive, he drives them into Hood River and they, they have their own buses, so they take the bus, they drive to Hood River, he does the test. And then they just have to send the paperwork off to the state and pay the fees for the test.
Yeah.
Bring a trainer in and they would pay the trainer to do it and they sat there and looked at it and started, that trainer trained two people up here. To be certified, Mr. Davidson, Mr. Tucker, I don't think Mr. Tucker is currently employed with the school to do it anymore, but Mr. Davidson does it all himself.
So, and you're talking about school buses, right?
Yes, and I don't know.
School buses go through Oregon Department of Education and it's a whole different thing, I worked for the bus company for nine years, so. Um, they, and it's different and they do, a lot of bus companies have a third-party trainer that trains in. But I don't know.
But it's a diff, we're talking about differences.
You're talking about, yeah.
It's a third, it's a third person now.
Yeah, so do, and does that third-party tr, person they go to the classes with, do they do the? Drive test too, or then do they study?
They do everything and then they sign off on the person, send the stuff to DMV and DMV will issue you that.
Okay, so they don't have to turn around and drive for that?
No, no, DMV no longer does testing themselves, they don't even do driver's license tests anymore. You have to go to the third party to get your driver's license.
Oh, wow. Guess it's been a while. Just, you mentioned driver's license and so I just had a thought, we had to go through this process and we had to go through the third party. But we were very fortunate that someone had dropped out of the class and we were able to get into the class, otherwise it was, I think.
Yeah.
Bigteen months out, even get onto the, I mean. Is, I was gonna say, is that really?
Potentially, I guess that, we haven't really looked into that timeline stuff yet.
This is, um, from a, from the county side, it's. Couple issues with it that I can think of is one is a budget issue and we need to start budgeting for some training when we do this because. Potentially, and I don't really budget for one or two, but we need to plug something in. And, um, then what kind of, when we're hiring, because this is gonna affect every area of the road department and the weed department. Um, what kind of link times we put on this, because in the hiring process, we've got to have, we got to know we have an employee with a CDL by it. We got to put a date on it, we can't.
Oh, right, and the other, uh, factor is that aside from Dewey and the road rock pressure supervisor. The, the, these are all union.
What's, what's that?
Aside from you and Brad, everybody else is a union. Um, and so that contract says that new hires are under, new hires, not. Not people who are moving, um, are under six-month probation. Um, that allows us, for instance, say you were to, uh. Offer a conditional offer of employment, you can, we can write in there that the stipulation is that they have to have their CDL within that six months. But we don't necessarily, as a management, have, uh, the ability to extend that without the union also signing off on that. And so my concern would be that training absolutely and the certification, licensure absolutely has to happen within those six months.
So we can't put, um, shorter time period on that either than by contract probably.
You could put a shorter time on the CDL, the probationary time is written into the contract, um, so that is. That, that happens with every department, whether this person works out or not, kind of thing, we have six months, but.
Do you know how long the training takes?
From, depending on your skill level.
Yeah.
From three to eight weeks up to six months.
And cause you're dealing with, you know, time restrictions, you're dealing with classes, I mean, it can be all sorts of things, so my, one of the things I wanted to look at too is. Cost-wise, if there's hybrid schools out there, so like Hood River County has their, um, people that they hire, they do a lot of it. They do a portion of it online and then they only travel for skills tests. So what it is that, what are, does Hermiston use that model or what models are out there, because that would be something, then they don't, they can sit at. The county shop or the county with a computer and take those portions of it, so they're only having to travel for the skills portion, which probably helps cut down costs. Cause if they're having to travel for the whole thing, we're talking. Daily travel, six, eight.
I know my brother did bus training up in Hermiston and stayed up there in a motel quite a bit, and so you can end up with, you know, food and cost and a lot of other things, but. I think for the purpose of this, we can, we can find that.
That's what I've reached out to and they haven't got back to me yet.
For the purpose of.
What's, what's in tail, um, the Oasis group tried to get ahead of this and we were gonna. Everybody was gonna invest X amount a year into this fund and Oasis was gonna have. Somebody that would do training for every county in the state, but everything just happened so fast that it, it hasn't materialized yet.
And part of the, cause one of the discussions we had too was looking at like having a county employee become trained. And other counties have that and some of the larger counties like Multnomah and Washington and things like that, and they. Figure out it's not exactly cost feasible, because then you're having two staff not working for X amount of time. Because they're doing the training, so it's not that they're not working, but they're not doing the other portion of their job with our smaller crews, that's not probably the most feasible thing.
Yeah, and I think that we need to probably figure those pieces out going down the road, but we need to decide is. How much are we gonna spend for training and how long do they have to get licensed?
Yeah, I feel like, um, would be helpful to, I think. Get some firm numbers on how much it actually costs to train, say worst-case scenario. Uh, cause it could either be a discussion where the county picks up a hundred percent or the county provides a training stipend that says, so that limits our exposure. So that if they keep going back, because they're not getting it, well, that, that's on their dime, um, so that we're limiting. Our exposure and we know, and then that helps with Dewey's budget.
Think there's a, it's, it's not a pass-fail deal, it's you pay until you pass. That's, that's the way it is, you, you continue to go to school until you pass the test.
But do they?
And so you just.
It, and it increases.
But they have to pay more, right?
But I don't understand, Dave, what I don't understand or haven't been told is, what are they charging for, are they charging for the test or the charging for the training, what are they paying for?
That's, that's.
Probably all of the above.
The information I'm, I'm.
So, so, do, do they have some sort of a schedule of payment, if, I mean, you know what I'm saying, it's, it looks like there's gotta be. Like, how can it be open-ended based on each individual?
Skill level is what it's, it's based on, you, you train until you, you pass these. I guess, they'll set these bars and pass.
So we need to find out what it costs to do each skill, the, the, cost to do each skill level one time.
To get your class A CDL. We don't need tankers, we don't need any other endorsements, just truck or trailer.
So perhaps this is something, I know you're busy Dewey, but perhaps this is something maybe our staff and Jolie could work on. Getting some firm numbers and maybe Delaney can work with CIS who will have some comments. Ensure on the risk of. Related to employment, um, issues, um, they could also, uh, help us if there is a. If in the interim, while we're figuring all of this out, there is, um, other questions we need to run by related to. Say the six-month probation and stuff like that, they can help us with that, um, it seems like the six-month.
Fits everything.
Fits with both the training and also what we've already agreed to within the CBA, um, so that's a neat. I think it's easy after, you know, as long as the deadline is a couple of days before the six months to go to the union if there's a hire. And if the person has failed to receive their CDL, to say this was a condition of their employment, they did not, um, do that. And so we're not able to continue their employment, because they can't physically do what we need them to do in the position. Um, but we cannot have those run over, um, at all, uh, because the CBA really. It can allow us to do that, assuming the union agrees to, but that is a pretty big risk, um, because the union has every right to say, nope. Uh, we're not gonna allow that, so, to extend the probationary period. And once they're no longer under probationary period, termination becomes a bit more complicated, so, um, it seems like that's the cleanest. And maybe we can borrow from our neighbors who have already ahead of us on policy and see, i- is it. Is it the intent of the court so that Delaney kind of knows what policy we're looking for, um.
And how quickly we need to move, Dewey.
To.
I, uh, w- waiting on timetables for where we're at with the hiring process currently, so I need, so, I mean, it's all. ASAP is probably the. Yesterday.
So, and another thing, I just wanna, so, and Pat's talking about budget. So we're, we're gonna be paying this person, I'm assuming, to attend the training and then paying for the training. So we gotta calculate that into the.
Yeah, so the, um, police time would already be budgeted for, um. The travel, I'm assuming you have some travel money in there.
It, it, it will be the extra cost that, that, that isn't budgeted in this year's budget.
But still, that employee is not working and in the county per se as a individual.
Okay, so, could I get some clarity, Commissioner, so Delaney knows what kind of policy you would like to see come back? Is the intent for the county to cover the cost for?
Or would you like us to consider a payback table in that agreement, because I mean, that, yeah.
Or is there a, cause what I, here's what I'm curious about. I'm actually really curious about how they structure payment, because I get what Dewey's saying, like, if you're less skilled, you're gonna be there longer. To me, that is maybe a place where you can meet in the middle with the employee and say, the county will provide the base payment. But if you need extra help, that's on you, you're gonna have to figure out how to come, come up with that and we're gonna pay you a salary in the meantime and you're gonna have this benefit. But then that way, if some. But then that way, if somebody just isn't getting it, it's taking them longer. We are still limiting our exposure and able to say, this is exactly how much it takes on our end when we're budgeting, like whether it's $5,000 or whatever that percentage is. So that if you do have somebody who needs more help, like it's not throwing your budget off. And, you know, you, we know exactly what our contribution is, and we write it as a training stipend, basically, that we provide this, and any, any cost incurred that go above this is on you, employee. Thoughts about that approach?
Let me get, let me get all the information.
So here's one.
I will pray, I will bring it at the next court meeting.
For a basis, I found this is T Enterprises, they're tri-city based truck driving school for a class A CDL. It's 160 hour course. It is $5,000. That includes 40 hours of classroom time, 32 hours of railroad driving, 18 hours of backing, 20 hours of pre-trip inspection and 50 hours of observation.
So that should probably be the maximum we pay. And that's, that's a, that's a, that's a good number, that's the lowest number ever. And that should be the maximum county pays to get somebody trained.
So maybe what we could do is Delaney can pull some sample, because several counties, as Dewey said, several counties have been doing this. And thankfully, some of them are way far ahead of us, so we can borrow and steal policy. But it sounds like maybe the direction we're going in is rather than having language that says we pick up the entire training, is that we provide a travel or a training stipend. We will need to double check on how that's taxed with Allen, so make a note for that. And then that will allow the, the court to cap that. And if, as things change, we can move the stipend up. If they, obviously, I'm assuming at some point it will become more than 5,000, just because that's the way of the world. But then that allows the, for the budgeting side to know what our potential exposure is. And then it also places the onus on the employee or prospective employee, that if they're just not getting it or they're not taking it seriously and.
Then I think we should also put something in there, even though it may not be enforceable, on some sort of a length of employment tied to that expense that we spend to train them on a CDL, just so it's there.
Okay, we will explore what that looks like. I am not sure how that works with the union contract. So we'll dig right into that and see what we can come up. Okay, do you feel like we have enough direction?
And I'm hoping CIS has consulted on several counties already regarding their policies. So I'm hoping CIS really has a lot of this bulk work done already. And we're just going to be able to rob language from current.
I would think that some other bigger county has already addressed all of this.
Yeah, the main one I got a lot of my information from was Wasco County. And they've worked with CIS on their policy that includes that timetable. So I would imagine that we would be able to access that.
Maybe subsequent to this, we need to put a plug into our partners who are in the workforce development space. That Kellen is a big part of one of those boards. That when the legislature is looking at where to put money for workforce development, perhaps they ought to have a pool of money for CDL that people could apply to directly to workforce development and have a percentage of the cost covered. And then that would help the counties be able to not have to take on that burden.
That's right where my mind was going, is how this workforce organ leaning in to support this development of, you know, necessary skilled labor. So I'll, I'll have there as soon as I get back to office.
Perfect, look at how much work we got done and, okay.
Do you guys currently have like a finding bonus if you already have a CEO? I mean, I know that people are throwing out finding bonuses everywhere because workforce isn't a crisis, but maybe to save some costs. Laws on those changed, and I remember that from some meetings I've had in regarding other boards. And so if you now, the law is, I believe if you offer those, you also have to go back and look at your current employees who would have qualified for said bonus, and you also have to look at possibly paying it to them. So that would be, and I think negate any benefit we would have.
It'd be quicker to train them.
Yeah.
Well, it's expensive. Okay, anything else on this piece? We have good direction, we will.
Hopefully have something to bring back.
Work as quickly as we can. Okay, anything else on that piece? Okay, let's go into announcements. Next meeting is February 1st, that one will be in Condon. I think that is it for afternoon meetings. Mr. Shannon, what do you have going?
Well, I'm now on the Norcore Board and I was asked to meet with Brad Lowery and Molly Rogers to meet, greet, I guess, a little background on Norcore, what's going on. Brad couldn't go because he had to front there telling that in a 911 meeting. And I did meet Molly and Dan White, whoever the juvenile director is down there. And the first Norcore meeting is tomorrow, so. Other than that, and I attended a number of the AOC committee meetings last week. Two or three days they ran and. Other than that, Crete is Friday, Crete meeting Friday. You are now the alternate and might want to attend the meeting and get up speed.
And also on Zoom.
You got a preview of some of the discussions that happened around these things, so.
It's a lot to digest initially while the absorb it. So it's, there's a lot of, I've gotten a lot out of it, just in what I've learned about.
I might be at my fill right now.
You will, I've attended that myself.
She is not, she's been in confusion. The past commissioner would get on for a little bit, get off, she says, I just, I can't understand what all they're talking about.
Sounds like her.
Okay, I made a list because not get it, talking off the cuff. So we had our public health staff meeting on the ninth, talked about that earlier. I attended the South Gillum Health District meeting on Monday. And a couple of things they had on their agenda that kind of spoke to me was that they were going to purchase a Bluetooth speaker microphone for their meeting, so their communication will be better going forward. And their public records request form has been revised and is being sent back to their attorney. And then once that is done, then they will forward it to Wiz and you can forward it to the county attorney. So then I listened in on the Eastern Oregon caucus call, which that was kind of a waste of time because they spent so much time on introductions and what they were doing. And, but they did mention that there's about 3,000 bills right now with more to come. So I'm going to tour the Arden Mills after this county court meeting today. I'm on my way to County College tomorrow with Delaney and Miranda. And then Monday, we'll have our call with the OHA Gillum County Public Health fiscal meeting. That I talked about earlier.
So just a few, few items on your list, just a few. Okay, so for me, I was down at AOC, was that last week? Two weeks ago?
Last week.
I don't remember anymore. It was the, it was the ninth, you were gone because we were.
Yeah, last week, I was just last week.
Yeah, yeah, so it was down in Salem. AOC is meeting in Carson, which is very nice to be down there and see their new facility. I was actually heartened to learn that for my own personal passion project, that they are working on childcare. And AOC is much more engaged. And that some of the, some of our colleagues, who I thought would absolutely think that childcare is, should not be a county issue, were the ones who were most outspoken about its importance. So that made me felt great. And now I have lots of people I'm going to go lobby and say, let's partner on this a little bit more. So that is going on. And they will have their next, in a couple of weeks, already two weeks, I think, is when the next one is. So I will be going back for that and hoping, I believe the legislature will be in session by then. And so I'm hoping we can connect with some of our state lawmakers about, and maybe put in some asks for funding and other things that we're working on here. So that is going on. Wanted to just take a temperature on the, from you guys, related to the enterprise zone extension. We did receive, or I received an email from Art Fish last week. Just starting the very, very beginning of outreach of like, for those entities that have one that is expiring, are you guys interested in working with us to, to get that extended? And basically what he is saying to us is like, I just need an informal, yes, we're interested. And so I wanted, before I did that, to make sure, yeah, we're in.
Yes, we're interested.
Okay, so I will reach out to him and then I'm hoping he will sit down with Delaney and I and start to lay out like what the process looks like. And then hopefully then we can work with our other taxing district partners to fit, to outline a schedule, kind of figure out so that all of the other governing bodies are going to have to make some decisions and provide input on who the manager is. Currently, Gillum County is the manager. I just want to make sure that the cities and everyone is still on board with that approach. So there'll be some time to provide that input. And then I think there's a whole public process we have to go through. So Delaney and I will work on doing a, sort of working from like a June 30th deadline backwards to try to put in many meetings and all the things that need to happen.
So, because I think there's a real legislative push to extend the, the program. And if, when they're asking specifically from us, what is, I mean, there's going to be, everybody's going to want to extend enterprise zone.
So in particular, there are 10, so it's kind of two separate things. So one is the extension of the actual law that authorized the enterprise zones. There's a bill for the legislature, because I think the entire program sunset's in 2025. So there's a bill on that piece to extend the entire program. Underneath the currently authorized program, there are 10 of us who have enterprise zones that are going to expire next year.
Right.
So the question is, do we want to extend ours? Answer yes.
Yeah, that's a specific.
And then assuming the legislature says yes, then my hope is that whatever we do in our extension is able to, won't cut off in 2025, that if the legislature extends it, it'll go beyond 2025.
Have we ever used enterprise zone ever?
Back in the day of, so one of the first windmill project. It hasn't been used much in recent years, but there's, I think, four or five things that I saw on the hit list of projects.
So is it, is there going to be some concerns because we haven't used our existing enterprise zone?
I mean, possibly, but I think we could make a strong argument that the reason that the more recent development hasn't gone under there is because the state has provided other tax abatements that have been more lucrative. And so we've, we've supported the red zone, we've supported SIPs, we've supported the pilot. So all of those things diverted people who would normally use the enterprise zone. And then once this capacity is exhausted, and maybe we're talking to more brick and mortar businesses that might be willing to invest, that that would be the incentive to bring them in. But at this point, the developers found other avenues that the state authorized. So there's interest.
And it's, nobody knows what's going on, but like Penn and Hills and some of those might fall into something like that, that would be.
Large enough investment. I mean, it's, I think we could make a strong investment or a strong case, that given where we are right on the doorstep of the Port of Morrow, who is almost full, from what I understand, or reaching capacity, that having an incentive to be able to say, well, don't keep it in Oregon, come here, is not only good for us, but also good for the state. So I will make that strong case when we talk to Art.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, and, and, and some of these interest industries like the one that we have the NDA with, is, are those falling under SIPs agreements or they fallen under?
They would, no. Well, they can, because Intel is under a SIP agreement. So there are examples in, in other places where. But I, I think Intel is an exception, like most, probably most other big.
Man, I have a lot of questions around how that works and how it's worked in other areas. Because I know there's similar to SIPs, discretionary funds used somehow, if they're used through enterprise zones, I don't know how any of that works.
Yeah, this is a new area for me. I'm not up to speed on enterprise zones.
It's going to be my worst note.
I might start with talking to some of the Washington County commissioners about Intel and how that looks. And even the Port of Morrow, I'm sure has quite a few people who are in under an enterprise zone that could probably provide.
Most of them are all the Amazons, MyWest and River Processing. I live in Morrow County, so.
Yeah. I just.
Most, most everything I believe in the, in the port industry area is all under the credit.
So we would.
Some sort of capacity.
I think not having it, I think we could make a strong case that given that our neighbors around us have it, that it would put us at an unfair disadvantage trying to recruit if we don't have that tool, even if it's not been used in the past. But it still needs to be there. Because, well, and also because from what we've seen so far, a lot of the, I mean, like the pilot, for instance, the red zone, those are really geared towards energy specific renewables. And the enterprise is a broader range of industry that you can recruit. And so not having that tool would be a huge hindrance to anybody who's trying to bring industry in that's making those size investments. Okay, let me think of what else I had going on, fiber. So wanted to update you guys that we set Julie loose on the broadband map. Bless her heart, I could just hug her right now. So she literally went through the, for everyone who made it not Julie. So for anybody who's not familiar, the FCC has a broadband map that they are using to determine where the federal infrastructure dollars for broadband deployment are going to go. We looked at the map and it is, was completely inaccurate on where our houses are, all kinds of things, whether you had service or not. So the FCC had a challenge period open where people could go in and say, this is my home address, this is not correct, da, 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 da. But doing that for the entire county seems like that was out of reach as well. Ms. Julie came along and took the FCC's map and matched it up with the assessor's tax maps and challenged 233 addresses in this county. One by one, she went to every house, every barn, everything, and challenged every incorrect address that we have on our tax rolls that were on, mislabeled on the FCC map. So kudos to you, Julie, thank you. And why, why this is important is because literally the federal government, as they start doling out money, is going to be counting the number of households that do not have internet access. And so if we do not have an accurate count, we potentially give up millions of dollars in tax, in, in investment, infrastructure investment from the feds to be able to push forward our fiber initiative to get fiber to every household in Gillum County. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Julie that I'm grateful that she talked about.
Must be why she didn't go to the weed committee board yesterday.
She's busy working.
Sorry. And the other thing, just to note for people who are interested, is we have heard back from our consultant, our broadband consultants who are doing the engineering and figuring out how to actually deploy the broadband and how much it's going to cost. We are anticipating they are going to be here at our second meeting in February to show us what they came up with and for the court to talk about whether it would like to move into a phase two, which is actually getting the detailed drawings and figuring out how we want to structure RFPs related to that in the hopes that, of what we are hearing from the state is they want to put money where people are ready to accept it. And so if we are, if we have all of those things lined out, that would make our application stronger. So that is coming. I just wanted to flag that for you. And I think that is all I have. Did I have anything else?
No.
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? Wow, what a meeting. It is 1:14 and I will go ahead and adjourn.